All right, so the first order of business is our calendar, which Ms. Coyne has put up on the screen. We are, the end is in sight. Everything looks like it says June, except the first night of town meeting, when the budget will be discussed, so I recommend that to each of you. Are there any other additions to the calendar? We might do an additional liaison, otherwise. All right, so the second thing is the consent agenda. There are two items. One is the pass record, May 8th, and the second is the establishment of the Nicolette de Tribulus Scholarship. Would someone like to move the consent agenda? Moved? Is there a second? All right, discussion?
Yes, thank you. That's what I really wanted to do. I was, I was really thrilled with this scholarship and the amount that is being put aside for it. And so, and in reading the detail around it, it didn't give much sense of why this woman decided to leave the money for a scholarship. So unless I read more between the lines there than I could, I would like us to find out, if we could.
Okay.
And thank them, obviously.
Yes, we always, we always send a thank you.
Yeah, I know we always do send a thank you, but I think, you know, a $250,000 scholarship is, is a significant amount of money for somebody to leave to her high school, and I'd like to know what her thoughts, or if there is any other information we could find out about it.
All right. Our trusty secretary, I'm sure, will be able to find out something and, and let us know. All right, motion seconded. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous. All right, subcommittee reports, the second, the item on the agenda, we do for scheduling reasons, yeah? Okay, for scheduling reasons, Dr. Fisher-Mueller is, would like to present the, where is it? The, where is it?
Yes.
The strategic plan next steps.
Right, specifically, so it's on here. Tonight, you're going to consider the changes to the strategic plan core values and goals, just before she leaves for another commitment, from which she will return later in the evening. Dr. Fisher-Mueller is going to take us through the, the what next? What happens now with our strategic plan, assuming that these, that this part of it's approved tonight? Dr. Fisher-Mueller.
Thank you. So, what I would like to do, I enjoyed sharing with you in that first reading, the vision, mission, revised core values, and revised goals. And what I want to do very briefly tonight is give you a sense of the basic architect, architecture that will be developed, and then that timeline. So, very quickly, this top row here, that's the four goals, and we will be defining what these top line metrics are for those four goals. And what we've said over and over that everyone understands, and we've done well with our past strategic plan, is this layer right here on how school level, school improvement plans are in fact developed from the top level, if you will, strategic plan. The piece that's different here from 1.0 that is of great significance, that I'm actually very excited about, is that from the large strategic plan, we're going down one level, thinking about across the system, what are those annual action plans and benchmarks or milestones that we will identify for each of those years? My pointer just died. So, what does that look like in terms of the timeline? Right now, since presenting the report card that you'll get a brief summary of tonight, of strategic, strategic plan 1.0 for this past year, what we're doing is looking back through the five years, and even a bit further back to see what then teed us up for strategic plan 1.0, reviewing all that with a deep understanding and questioning of, you know, where did we really see some movement and some growth? And what are those strategic areas where we want to continue those actions? We have had great discussions with strategic plan 2.0 committee around those, those high level actions, and we need to return to those in defining what that, that middle layer will be, if you will. And then we're going to be proposing these highest system level metrics, where we will be stating very clearly, how are we going to measure our progress toward those visionary goals? And that's the level of detail that I believe Dr. Jackson and Ms. Stone, you were speaking to. Again, identifying those high priority actions, and we're going to need to revisit our annual reporting format. The current format has served us well for 1.0, and it's going to need to shift for 2.0, and we've learned a lot from that. Then in the fall, we'll be marching those proposals around for feedback, certainly going to the curriculum subcommittee, and our timeline has us presenting to you the large school committee for approval on or before January of 2015.
All right. Anything else? Great. Any questions for Dr. Fisher-Mueller?
So, I'm not clear, is the strategic planning committee continuing? Or is that, have they finished their job?
They have finished with the, the work charged for those four cornerstones, if you will, of the foundation of the strategic plan, and they have had input then, and really informed the conversation about those high priority actions moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Good. Any other questions? We will actually vote it with a whole group of other
Great.
actions later this evening, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item two, subcommittee reports. Our first up, we have Mr. Chang, finance.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just realized, it's interesting that my first report as the chair, and I'm the only one that actually didn't attend that meeting that Monday, so I will do my best, so. And also, I'm assuming
You can, you can keep this brief, since all eight of us were here.
Yeah, that's what I say.
So you do need to inform the public, but we've deliberated all this.
Right, right. So are we also going to have detailed conversation later on in the evening?
About lunch.
Yeah, exactly, the fourth, the third quarter report? Okay, so keep it short. Anyway, the, the, we have some good news to report, and we'll go into a little more detail later on, but it looks like we are currently, as of third quarter, we're on track to finish the year below our budget for this, for the schools, and, which means that we're on track right now to generate approximately $630,000, $61,000 of surplus for fiscal year 2014. And since, again, since I wasn't here, why don't we wait for the detailed report later on, you know, this evening?
All right, very good. The only other thing I would note on the finance update is that on Tuesday evening, there was a, two votes of the advisory committee and of the Board of Selectmen regarding the FY15 budget. The Board of, sorry, the advisory committee chose to remove funds for the Driscoll feasibility study from their, the budget that they are going to move at town meeting next Tuesday. They are replacing, they're using that $1 million in, from the overlay account to fund a million of the million and a half dollar Lawrence project, so that means only a half a million dollars is going to be bonded. So originally, a million and a half of Lawrence was going to be bonded, and we were going to have a million for Driscoll. We've now, the advisory committee has now removed the million for Driscoll, taken a million of the million and a half, moved it to the overlay account, and then a half a million will still be bonded. Their thought at the time was that this would come up again in November, and that if they, if town meeting at that time funded the Driscoll feasibility project, that that money would come out of bonded money. The difference is timing, which obviously we have a tremendous number of thoughts on. The other practical difference is that right now, the vote requires a majority, and in the fall, it would require a two-thirds vote. That was not entirely clear out of Tuesday's discussion. Anyway, we can come back to this during the Capitol report perhaps, or if there are any other questions, but as it stands right now, that was the advisory committee's vote, and that will, as it stands right now, unless something changes, that is the main motion at town meeting for the FY15 budget. The Board of Selectmen did not follow suit. The Board of Selectmen 5-0 voted the original budget, which includes the million of Driscoll from the overlay account, million and a half of Lawrence from bonding. So unless there are questions on that, all right. Any other questions for Mr. Chang on finance?
All set, thank you.
All right. Mr. Pollock, I know you are delighted to be at your ninth school committee meeting of the week, it being 6:20 on Thursday. I'm sure you're delighted that you became chair of the capital improvement subcommittee, so that you could attend all these meetings. Do you have a report for us?
Thank you, I do. People keep asking me if I'm having fun, so yes, I'm, I am actually having fun. That may reflect poorly on my mental health, but, but I am having fun.
We have an excellent mental health center.
So, there's a lot happening with Capitol, and that's a lot, that has a lot to do with the fact that summer's coming on, when the schools are, school buildings are empty, and so that's when the building department likes to, likes to go to work. Mr. Rowe provided an overview of some of the summer space work that's planned at Lawrence. There are going to be some internal walls moved around, and programs moved, with a net effect of creating two additional classrooms within the building, and that's in addition to the, the planned addition that, that is also going to start soon. At devotion, a full classroom is being created on the third floor by turning two rooms into three and moving a science lab. There's a conference room that's going to be created at Heath. At Driscoll and Brookline High, each building is losing two pre-k's, and those four are going to be at Beep at Putterham. And at Baker and Pierce, they're actually getting new cafeteria furniture, new cafeteria tables that are more space efficient, so that they're going to be able to have, essentially make the room bigger in terms of the number of kids that can be in there. And then of all those tables that are being decommissioned, some of them are broken and will be disposed of, and others will go to Old Lincoln.
That sounds very efficient.
Yes. An update on Capitol projects. So at the Unified Arts Building, we're coming to the very last piece of the slate roof replacement and all of the brick pointing. There's a little money left in that budget, and it's going to be spent on a pointing project, brick pointing this summer. Very exciting, and brand new slate roof on June 27th. They're going to put up scaffolding and start replacing the slate roof on the historic Pierce School Building, and that may actually fall, some of that may be done in the following summer as well, just to see how the time goes.
Actually, I think they're going to continue to do it. What they will do is begin in the front, so that they would finish that by September, so students could come in the front door, and then do the back in the fall.
Okay.
I think it's to continue, it's not in two summers.
They'll get the front door open by fall. And at Old Lincoln, the scope has been finalized, based on back and forth with the architects and cost estimates. It's still the three and a half million dollar budget, and that, the building department and the architects are kind of green lighted to get the construction documents which finished, which are supposed to go out to bid on July 18th, and that's slated to be complete for September 2015. At Brookline High, there's a, there's a visioning and planning process. The SMMA, the consultant, is under contract, and they are coming to talk to us on June 16th about their, their process, and all the stakeholders, and the kind of meetings, and input that they're going to have, and their goal is, in December, to report out with a set of programmatic and visioning recommendations for Brookline High 2020, or really, how do we manage a school that's 50% bigger than the one we have today? And then just, if I can go back to OLS, the architects, Arrow Street, for the Old Lincoln project are going to be here in our next meeting on June 5th to tell us about that project. The four classroom addition for Lawrence is going to be out to bid in four weeks, as long as a warrant Article 8 gets passed, and there is a budget, and they get their additional funding for that project from town meeting. And the devotion school building committee next meets on Friday morning, May 30th, and that committee is now, basically needs to pick among the number of choices that were submitted to MSBA on what the preferred option is going to be for, for Brookline, for that school, and in order to do that, have scheduled meetings every other week all summer, to really go through that process and be ready to get a, a next submission into MSBA, hopefully for their September meeting, to keep that project on track. And the, yes, sorry.
Those, those meetings, the every other week meetings through the summer, they're, they're all publicly posted.
Those are, public meetings, and I encourage everyone to come. It, it's very, it's, the devotion school building committee has 17 members, it's a totally broad spectrum of, of the community. There are parents, there are neighbors, there are businesses from the district, the superintendent, the people from the building department, two members, Helen, Ms. Charlebsky and Ms. Cox, from the school committee. Anyway, it, you know, there's, then there's a lot of, every time that committee, me, I also am always there, but I'm not on the committee formally, so I don't get to vote, but I do participate, they let me talk. And, and the architects always have new material when they come, and new questions to ask, and it's a lively discussion about, about the shape of that project going forward.
And also, if I could just add, or maybe Abby wants to add, the process that we went through in the last two meetings of sort of talking about what we valued at the, at the school, and what was, what was most important, what was next most important.
Jacob's ladder, the facilitator called it.
Thank you. I'm not sure, I'm sure there's a biblical reference there, but whatever it is. But, but it really helped to sort of consolidate, to see which areas there was total agreement on, and which areas there was, you know, some bifurcation even, and there weren't many at all in terms of being, you know, very, you know, by
It was, no, that was a good exercise. When it was first introduced, there was a lot of resistance from the committee. Why is this that we're being voted on? Why, wait a minute, why can't we rephrase this and everything? And the facilitator said, "We took this right out of the submission to MSBA, as these are the things that are, that are sort of in, in, to be decided." And then, but what, when everybody ranked, they came back and they sorted the different criteria, how important was green space, how important was, you know, that the community could be able to cross the site to get from point A to point B. And they ranked them into the ones where there was the, the most agreement, whether it was, everybody wanted it or everybody didn't want it, and those were sort of the easy ones, and then the ones where there was most disagreement in the, in the committee, those were the ones that were, more time was spent on talking about. Anyway, it's a good, it's good public process.
At the last devotion building committee, we were waiting for a response from the MSBA on our initial submission, or we expect to have it by this Friday.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we'll hear about it tomorrow, and the committee will hear next Friday.
That'll help us narrow down options.
Just on, on devotion, one question, I mean, I think we all know that public processes over the summer get lighter attendance than those that happen during the spring, summer, and, spring, winter, and fall. What is the sense of how much progress the committee is going to make before June, or what, are there going to be big decisions over the summer? Are people going to have a chance to look at them in September? Or is there going to be emails that go out? If, if there are substantive discussions over the summer, is there some process to email people and keep them posted somehow, so that they at least have a sense of what's happening?
I think that's definitely going to be a subject of discussion at our next devotion building committee meeting, and, and I think we need to schedule a community meeting before the next submission to the MSBA, so we'll have a lot of discussion about what is the timing of that, and how can we make sure that people are informed.
I mean, it'll have to be, it'll have to be very early, very early in the school year, because of the due date of that submission of the one preferred option. Yes, there's a big decision coming. Yes, it has to do with the one preferred option, and it's due, essentially the reason we've set that schedule in the summer is because it's due just after the school year begins.
Right, so on the theory that we don't have airline strikes at Christmas, it would be very helpful to be able to tell people what's going to happen before they leave in June, and if there's a website they should check every week if they choose, if they leave town for the summer, or whatever, that people can sign up for, and I know that there's active parent involvement in keeping all these things online anyway, but just being very thoughtful about that. Okay, as long as that's happening.
I think we'll be talking about that at our next meeting.
Finally, on the Driscoll School project, there was a, there were two community meetings at the Driscoll School, very well attended, lively discussion. I mean, I think it's, it's fair to say that there's been a lot of concern and consternation in the Driscoll community about having been left out of the planning process on the Driscoll project, and that the, that we have some, some catching up to do, in terms of really opening up the conversation as fully as possible about where we're going with that project, and that effort has been engaged. And there's another, a third meeting, I mean, there was one this past Tuesday, one this past Friday, and another one, there's being, attempt to find a schedule for it.
A week from tomorrow.
A week from tomorrow, except that the devotion school building committee is in the morning, so they may be at the same time, so.
They are at the same time.
Okay, so it's still going to be, so that'll be Friday morning at Driscoll, and you're going to just invite everybody to come over and see what's going on with the devotion.
Yeah, it's being hosted by the PTO, that was the date that that seemed to work, so that's the one we're going for.
8:05 AM, Friday morning, May 30th, at Driscoll. Under old and new business, we do have a vote. You've seen similar votes to this before. The Charlie Simmons, the Director of Buildings, asks that we approve a limited number of proprietary specifications for the Old Lincoln School project. And under the public bidding laws, you probably, only because I'm an architect, I probably shouldn't even bother you with all of this, but under the public bidding laws, it's supposed to be open specification, so that different products can be substituted by contractors, so that it's cost effective. But if, if it's voted by the town that it's in the public interest to use a certain brand, then it's okay, and you can put in the specifications, only use this. So it's a certain kinds of door hardware and equipment, which we have all of the parts and tools for, and we use throughout all of our buildings, so we want to continue using those parts, and those are LCN, Von Duprin, and Schleg. And then it's energy management system, systems by Johnson Controls, and that's because they're centrally controlled from Town Hall, or from, and, and so that's all part of a system that we need to keep integrated, even from multiple buildings, and then notify our fire alarm systems. And we have the same fire alarm systems in all the buildings, and that's for many reasons, including safety and familiarity for the fire department. So I would move that this, we've, oh, and also, the building department, building commission has moved, has recommended this, and as has the Capitol Subcommittee, has voted unanimously to recommend this to the full school committee. So I move this proprietary vote.
There is a motion, is there a second? Second, Dr. Jackson, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
And that is my report, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Very detailed. Ms. Cox.
Mr. Pollock, you mentioned a meeting with SMMA about the high school on the 16th of June, is that a, a public meeting, or?
No, that's, they're going to come and inform the school committee.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, I was wondering, because it was a Monday.
I'm sorry, the 19th.
The 19th, okay, great, thanks.
Are there any other updates that anyone has about Capitol at this point? Been so many things to say. All right, we're going to move on. Curriculum, Ms. Gatto.
Okay, and what I'm going to do is talk a bit about the annual strategic plan report card. As you know, the strategic plan is what guides the development of our priorities and goals for the public schools of Brookline. Using the goals from strategic plan 1.0, we have developed ways to assess our efforts to see if we have been successful in meeting these goals. Since 2010, we have used the publication at School in Brookline to report to the community on student achievement. As Dr. Fisher-Mueller reported earlier, we are in the process of finalizing the goals, priorities, and action plan for strategic plan 2.0, and this is the final year we will use this, this format that we're doing. Before we go any further, we should be clear that the strategic plan report card uses a, that while the strategic plan report card uses a variety of measures, standardized tests like MCAS, the number of students in various leveled classes at the high school, the four-year graduation rate, and so forth, to assess our progress, these are only some of the ways we assess our students. Portfolio assessments are done in some schools, the senior paper, the various presentations that students make, as well as their daily work in the classroom. All of these are a very important part of the larger assessment picture. If you remember, we give ourselves grades throughout this report, and if you wonder what report I'm talking about, it's this at School in Brookline, and the strategic plan report card is toward the end of it. The grades depend on the, the degree to which we meet, exceed, or fail to meet our goal, which is itself established mathematically based on previous achievement. Using letter grades to communicate the district's progress toward goals one and two of the strategic plan has served us well overall, but we've learned the limitations of the model. This learning will be applied to the creation of a new reporting mechanism for strategic plan 2.0. Let's take a minute to look at our strategic plan goals, and see how well we did. Goal one, which is to increase the achievement of all students by creating learning environments that successfully balance content, pedagogy, and student-teacher relationships. Our goal for this section, our grade for this section, is B+. In general, in 2012, 13, our students have displayed strong academic performance on core measures of achievement. If you study the data at BHS, for example, you will see that our students continue to receive high scores on the SAT, ACT, and AP tests, and are pursuing greater challenges in their day-to-day courses, taking more honors in AP courses. On MCAS, elementary language arts and math, the upper grades continue to show great improvement, though some more work is needed at our lower grades. Strategic plan goal two is to eliminate achievement gaps with respect to race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status, and increase the achievement of students with special needs through individualized strategies and programs. Our grade for this section is B-, clearly, achievement gaps still challenge the district, though notable progress has been made in some areas. The achievement gaps have been lowered in higher-level course completion by African-American students, and for both African-American and low-income students in their SAT scores. Minority groups maintain high graduation rates, and all groups of students attend college in high numbers. Persistent gaps in achievement, however, between majority groups and Black African-American, Hispanic, Latino, and low-income students continually challenge this district. Students with special needs graduate at a rate significantly above that of the state average. However, achievement, particularly in math, continues to be a challenge. In summary, we continue to show evidence across multiple measures that the public schools of Brookline is a high-performing school district, and we have mixed results across those measures for closing our persistent achievement gaps. those measures for closing our persistent achievement gaps. Comments, questions?
Any questions for Ms. Gatto? Comments?
Go ahead, I can see it coming.
I just wonder whether, I actually can't quite figure out what my question is. I, except that it sounds to me like what we're saying is we're making slow but steady progress. And I guess the question I have is, does that feel good enough? And I, to what extent the Strategic Plan 2.0 took that on directly in terms of what we've accomplished to date, the ongoing challenges that you just described extremely well, and whether or not the new strategic plan really zeroed in on ways to make progress or in the areas where we are experiencing those ongoing challenges?
I, I am not the one to answer about Strategic Plan 2.0, but I will say that one of the issues is that while the, while various subgroups are improving overall, or in specific areas, so is everyone else. So though scores will get higher, you don't necessarily see a change in the achievement gap because everyone's scores have gone up. So that, that piece remains persistent and difficult because we want everyone's achievement to go up, but we, we also want to close the gap. But in order to close the gap, you, students in certain subgroups have to gain more in a given year than other students. So that makes it, I think, very difficult. As far as 2.0 is concerned, I, I think maybe Susan might have more of a sense of that because you're familiar, you were on that committee that developed it.
I'm having to say something, do you want to say something?
I just wanted, I'll try to answer the first que, no, we're not, no, we're not satisfied, no. No, not at all. No, that, that, no. And I know, while I wasn't directly involved in the strategic plan conversations, and I'm sure Ms. DeKoff will respond to that piece, you know, I think, I think there's been a renewed focus in terms of, of some of the data, some of the other data points that we're looking at, some of the conversations we're having with leadership team about, about those, about that slow but steady but not good enough progress.
So I think there are two things. One is it was a clear part of the discussion of Strategic Plan 2.0 of what kinds of, not only spotlights needed to be shown on different pieces of this, but also what types of initiatives then mapped to the gaps that were, that were identified. And so I think that the, you know, there was a serious step back and look at what are the different things that the district is doing, both on students who are not performing at the levels we want them to perform at, but also what are the gaps at the advanced end as well, because there's, there are achievement gaps at both ends of the spectrum. And so that was a serious part of the consideration. I think the other thing that, that came through loud and clear was the idea that, that it's, there's language in there now that I think strengthens this and elevates it even more so. So if you were to look at 1.0 versus 2.0, the language is a little bit more clear and pointed around persistent gaps. It's elevated into the first goal. Achievement and equity have come together into one goal. So I think there was a fair amount of discussion, and with many people in this room who were part of it, Mr. Chang, Mr. Rogers, Dr. Wender Schubow, many people were part of that and that, that process. I don't think anybody on the Strategic Plan Committee was satisfied, Dr. Fisher Mueller wasn't satisfied. And I think that there are places, even in this year's report, where, you know, if the goal is to raise the bar and close the gap, then that means that everyone's doing better and some students need to be doing better at a faster clip. As Ms. Gatto said, we are seeing, you know, the overall proficiency rates incredibly high, I mean, really quite, quite astonishing in terms of how well we're doing overall on advanced and proficient in the district. But I think that not only are we not closing the gap, but there were a couple of places where it was, it was wobbly or, and or not, not advancing. And so I think the particular attention of those, and then drilling that down, because again, this is just still the, the district-wide portion of it, but drilling down into schools and to classrooms was kind of, and that's, that was some of the laddering you saw in the metric. So it was a substantial, I would say it was a substantial portion of the conversation.
Thank you, this is very helpful. I just, I just want to reiterate something that I've said in other meetings, and I know I've said recently in a Subcommittee meeting, that this is the kind of information and data that I think has to be brought into every conversation we have about things like class size. And when we are looking at, at our budgeting, where our priorities are, we frequently look at some of the special programming that we've done, investing in targeted interventions that we know have tremendous, have tremendous effects for struggling students in some areas, and can give that boost to the students where we most need it in order to close the gaps, that, that this is the kind of thing that I think we have to remember to bring back into those conversations and make those connections. Because that's where the data, that's where the rubber hits the road in terms of using data to drive the decisions that we make. So I just want to say that again. Class size is such a big conversation these days, and I wanted to make that point.
If I may add, just to give you one specific piece of data that's connected to something that seems to me fairly doable. Eighty-five percent of our graduating seniors have completed at least one course above the standard level. But when you compare the subgroups to the white majority, only 56% of our Hispanic-Latino students and 52% of our low-income students, because the gap is negative 34 for the Hispanic-Latino and negative 38 for our low-income, have completed one course above standard levels. So getting more kids from these various subgroups into the honor level courses, honors level courses with support is one thing we can do. And if you recall, we had a presentation from the English Department last year where one of the options for sophomore English was, was a course in which it was non-leveled. That wasn't non-leveled, and you took it at a level, but you could go in at a standard level or an honors level. You could try out the standard, you could see what was happening in the honors, you could switch back and forth. And at our curriculum meeting, Dr. Fisher Mueller said that that had worked very well. So I think as we begin to look creatively at ways to get students to challenge themselves at higher levels, we may see a continuing growth in achievement levels.
Any other questions on Strategic Plan Report Card? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Gatto. Government relations, and I will note, we are significantly behind.
There's been a lot happening in government locally in Brookline, and I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Ms. Stone, negotiations.
I'm very pleased to announce that we have settled on two dates for our initial conversations with the BEU around contract negotiations. We will be meeting first on June 4th and then again on June 11th, and look forward to the beginning of these negotiations.
Thank you. Policy review, Ms. Cox, we have a, a lot, you have a lot to tell us.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not going to help with your deadline, but I'll try to talk fast.
No, but it's important, so.
First of all, report that the Policy Subcommittee met on May 14th. In that meeting, we discussed feedback following the first reading of our revised Section K. We were pleased to have members of the Brookline Extended Day Advisory Council and the Town's Recreation Department in attendance who had comments for us to consider. As we mentioned at the last school committee meeting, the Policy Subcommittee is instituting a new process to solicit public comment, patterned on public comment periods for regulatory review that state agencies are beginning to undertake. Beginning with this policy, the Section K, we'll be posting proposed drafts on the PSB website after the Subcommittee has voted to send a draft to the school committee for the first reading. And in fact, if you go on the PSB website right now, you will see a version, the first reading draft of our revised Section K. How do you find it? On the homepage, under latest news and quick links, there will be notice of any policy that has been sent for first reading but not yet been voted by the full committee, with a link to the draft and a link to provide public comment that will send comments to the school committee office where they will be distributed. These links can, also can be accessed by clicking on the school committee page of the PSB website and then on the policy page. Our goal is to give interested members of the community a greater opportunity to review proposed changes and offer feedback prior to a vote. We'll be sending a letter to school families and staff and posting the letter to Brook Online informing TMMA to publicize this new process. I'd like to thank Megan Maher, the Director of Community Engagement, for her help in getting this launched. Because it took a few days, this is a new process for us as we're saying, because it took a few days after the first reading of Section K to get the mechanics of the web post worked out, and because this is a new process that many people may not yet even know exists if they're not watching us on TV regularly on Thursday nights, we have asked to delay the vote on Section K to our next school committee meeting on June 5th. So there's ample opportunity to try out this new process. Going forward, we would like to provide at least 10 calendar days for public comment. At the end of that period, I will review the feedback we receive, and if there are substantive issues raised that require action, I will consult with the school committee chair about reconvening the Policy Subcommittee before bringing a policy back to the full committee for a second reading and vote. Does anyone have any questions, comments on that?
Just express our appreciation for putting together a process that achieves what, what we were talking about, is better ways to inform the public of the kinds of policies we're considering and give them opportunities to comment. So thank you, it was a, a goal of ours to find ways to do that, and you've structured some things, so thank you.
It's a team effort.
And we know it's a pilot, we'll see how it goes.
I just want to add that nothing about this new process takes the place of our existing process. So when a public hearing is, is required or considered desirable for a particular policy, we will still do that, that, that this is in addition to rather than instead of. So I think it's important that people know that, that they can continue to interact with us and comment on policies at, at any point.
Thanks, and that raises something else, which is on the school committee page of the website, there is a, another page called Public Comment, which explains all the, all the ways that people can offer suggestions and comments. We do have a smaller policy revision to consider tonight. While Section K was the primary part of the policy manual that dealt with after-school and out-of-school time, which we have been referring to as ASOS, there were other references to ASOS programs in the policy manual, and so the Policy Subcommittee has worked to address these as well. As a result, we're bringing to you today for first reading a part of Section I, which is the section on instruction, that came to our attention because of its references to after-school athletics and extended-day programs. To highlight the changes we're recommending, and you should have in your packet both the new language and the old. So the changes we're recommending are, the existing language on access to public schools of Brookline programs referred only to students who reside in Brookline. We're clarifying the language to specify that this includes resident students as well as those who are otherwise enrolled, because we know we have students from Metco, from Materials Fee, who are not necessarily, who are not residents of Brookline. For more logical organization, we've separated sections on regular school hours and after-school, out-of-school time. We've clarified here that the ASOS programs are subject to our nondiscrimination clause, which is the same clause that we have in Section K, we just want to make that explicit. We have inserted language, and this is a bigger change, we've inserted language that allows home-educated students who are residents of Brookline to participate in MIAA activities in accordance with the guidelines set out by that organization. We asked Pete Rittenberg, our athletics director, to speak with other schools in our league to discover how other districts were handling the issue of home-educated students, and we found that seven of the eight schools he spoke with do include homeschooled students in their athletic program. Members of the Policy Subcommittee felt this was an opportunity we should open to our residents. The superintendent was supportive, and so we are bringing it to the full committee for discussion. So I would invite comments, questions on Section I-1A, which is, we're doing our first reading.
And if people have thoughts or questions hereafter?
Exactly. Even members of this committee? I don't know, would they rather do it on the web?
There was a robust discussion about this at the meeting, so I think to sort of go over it again seems a little bit superfluous, and considering the time, I think it's good to move on.
Excellent, excellent point, okay. One housekeeping change attached to, or, sorry, Section I-1F and Section I-1G detailed the creation of regulations to govern extended-day and enrichment programs. The Policy Subcommittee felt that this has been adequately addressed in our new, more-focused Section K on after-school and out-of-school time, and so it seemed a bit redundant. We're recommending to the full committee that these two parts be removed from Section I. Any comment on that? And again, this is not being voted, just first reading.
And just to be clear on this one, this was discussed with extended day, they were part of the discussion also in terms of the new language that we do have.
Right, we have been very, I think, proactive in making sure that extended day has been part of this conversation. And they have been wonderful in reaching back to us and making sure that they have come to our meetings and stayed engaged. So it's, it's gone, I think, quite well. All right, shall we move on? Final policy to look at for first reading. Last year and into this year, we adopted new language revising requirements for verification of residency on registration and re-enrollment in the PSB. The school department alerted the Policy Subcommittee at our last meeting that a date we had chosen for the submission of documents for re-enrollment, that is, for returning students, which we had set at October 15th, has been problematic in a few cases where students, particularly in complicated special education placements, are discovered well into the school year not to actually reside in the district. The Policy Subcommittee, after discussion, found that any date we set will have advantages and disadvantages, but is recommending that the first day of school be set as the new deadline for proof of residency for returning students. This language is deliberately flexible because the date of the first day changes from year to year. We also expect that there will be a concerted communication effort to alert families to get their documentation in as quickly as possible at the beginning of the school year. So that is a change, and I think you'll see that reflected in the document that you've been provided.
Good question about that. Was there discussion about sort of the flurry of the first day and whether it should be the Friday after the first day or something? Can you just illuminate that a little bit for us, just so that we can have a sense of why we picked that date?
Sure, we, we did talk about the flurry of the first day, and many of us are familiar with that in that documentation. What we were led to understand was there would be a lot of communication about it that, that things could slip if, if it was set too far back, and that certainly no one will be turned away at the door on the first day if they don't have those documents, but it, it sets a marker for people to aspire to, to get things in earlier rather than later.
Just for some clarification for those of us who were here under an older system where there was just a little card that you signed and you sent it in, and that asserted that you were still at the same address. What are the forms that one needs to do today? Or maybe that can be shared at some point.
The policy, it's, it's, it's a, it's a submission on an annual basis of some proof of residency as documented in the policy.
So the child comes in with one of those?
Well, again, the, we're still working out the details of the process. Actually, most of this will be done, we believe, prior to the first day of school. That's our goal. The, the whole goal in this process for us was to make sure that we weren't exiting students after the school year began. We didn't want to be in a posi, we don't want to be in a position of, of doing that. But, but the new policy adopted But the new policy adopted a few years back now calls for parents to submit one of the forms of documentation that they, in the past, submitted upon initial registration on a yearly basis. So they'll be flexible. There'll be a number of documents that we'll accept as documenting that, and we're still in the process of setting that process of looking exactly the way that'll be done. We believe much of it will be done during the summer months, not by students, probably by parents, possibly by mail-in, possibly by visits to our office. There's going to be another number.
Would it be electronically?
We're not ready for that yet. Eventually, possibly, but we're not there yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Scotta.
I'm curious as to what will happen to the documents after they've been sent in. If I have income tax.
So we're asking for originals so that, so one of the issues about mailing right now is that they'll have to be returned in some way. So that's the issue that we're struggling with. We'd much prefer people come in, but we know during the summer months that won't work as the only avenue, and it will create lines, even if it did work. So we're still working out some of those details.
Mr. Pollak, did you have a question?
Oh, just, is there a, was there a sort of a freshness issue? That you can't do it for the, you know, when does it open up so that you could do it early?
Right. So that's the other end of the issue we're dealing with, right? Too late that it bumps up against the beginning of the school year, and we might have student, and we might be put in a position of exiting a student. We don't want to do that. And starting the process too early, and the document's not fresh enough that it can actually document that you're a student for the fall. So we're looking for a sweet spot, middle of June to the end of July-ish or into August as the main, as when the main documents will come in.
The policy subcommittee is scheduled to meet next on Wednesday, June 11th, at 8:30 a.m. Our agenda will include work to prepare for the new state discipline regulations that go into effect on July 1st. And we also hope to begin work on revisions to our staff tutoring policies, with a big thanks to Rebecca Stone for doing the preparatory work on that issue. So we invite you all to join us on June 11th.
All right. Thank you. The next item is the override study committee report, so I will give that. By now, many of you have heard that the Capitol Subcommittee of the Override Study Committee presented their vote on a few items on Monday night. See if I can find it. I will just read it very quickly to you. It was the unanimous consensus of the Subcommittee that the devotion project should move forward. It was also unanimous consensus that a long-range facilities plan for town and school facilities should be developed before a feasibility study for a specific school is undertaken to provide long-range planning context for individual projects. At the bottom, there was a question about whether or not the Subcommittee was making a recommendation regarding the Driscoll feasibility study, and their answer was, "The Subcommittee vote did not make a recommendation regarding the town warrant for the Driscoll feasibility study, nor does it specify timing or duration for the studies proposed." So that happened. Then there was an extended discussion. In the end, the full Override Study Committee did not feel comfortable voting on those recommendations, voting to endorse those recommendations. A number of people reminded themselves that the Override Study Committee is not a policymaking body. It's a fact-finding body. There were a number of questions that came up, one of which was around MSBA. There was a little bit of confusion about what MSBA's guidelines were. So the website gives different sentences which say different things. So Sean Cronin, our deputy town administrator, spoke with the MSBA, who's been a very longstanding partner of ours over many years and many large-scale projects, and the answer was that there is certain wording that we would need to use as a town if we went forward with this. He presented that wording to the advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen. As I said earlier, the Board of Selectmen affirmed it 5-0, and the advisory committee did not. There were other questions about what happens if an alternative path is pursued, a non-Driscoll path is pursued, specifically given the fact that the MSBA asked for a long-range plan last fall in order to proceed with the devotion project funding. And given that we gave them that plan, would this take us off of that plan? And would it bring the devotion project back up onto the table as a discussion item with the MSBA? Obviously, that is not known, but it is not, it was part of the discussion last fall. I'll leave it at that. And there were another, a number of other questions about the timing of the vote, what exactly the vote was. It was explained that the Driscoll feasibility study vote was essentially an option to vote, to spend funds on a feasibility study should and if the MSBA invite the town into eligibility, that there wouldn't be any funds expended before that approval came. And we were not, we did not know when that approval would come. It might, they have a meeting in August, they have a meeting, sorry, they have a meeting, sorry, September, they have a meeting in November. They have meetings at different times, and we didn't know when it would come. It was the school committee's position, as you recall, that we wanted the money available. Should they say yes, if, when, when they say yes, that that money was ready to go so we could start, and there would be no further delays in pushing out of what is already a space crisis situation. And that this really did not just involve the Driscoll District. It really involved overcrowding. It would have ripple effects sort of everywhere. And there were other questions that were brought up about the Driscoll District itself and whether or not there was growth in the Driscoll District that was, that the Driscoll District would be having to essentially absorb growth from other districts. And it was pointed out that the growth in the Driscoll District, if you look just at the core and anything that is a Driscoll buffer, essentially in and of itself fills a four-section school. Should redistricting, or should districting happen that way? No one's guaranteeing that it will, but certainly the population is there. So this is not solving the whole town's problem with one building project, but it certainly is, Driscoll is part of a broader solution, but the population was already in the Driscoll Core and Driscoll Buffer zones. So rich discussion of this. It was three and a half hours long. If you're really interested, you can go watch it on BATV, BIG. Any questions on the override study? We're still, we are still hoping and expecting, I should not say hoping. We are expecting to wrap up at the end of June with the fact base. Each of the subcommittees has reported out with their first tranche of initial findings, and those are getting tweaked and massaged. There is a massive model getting built to model many different scenarios. What happens with certain cost reductions on the school side or on the town side? What happens with different revenue enhancement opportunities on the school side, on the town side? So I'm not going to promise a buildmyoverride.com website, but essentially that is what we are, what we are building, is this massive Excel model with lots of assumptions baked in. And when you change the assumptions, you see what happens to the override. So it's this tool primarily, and then a lot of observations and some scenarios that one could run off of this tool that are going to be packaged and delivered to the selectmen no later than the end of June, unless something goes dramatically wrong. Any questions on the override study committee? All right. Our next meeting is next Wednesday, in between the two late, late nights of town meeting. Additional liaisons? All right.
I have one.
Oh, Mr. Pollak.
I very briefly attended the Brookline Adult and Community Education's board meeting at the high school on Monday night and had the opportunity to meet the Board of Directors, who are very passionate about adult ed. And then I said goodbye to them and came back here for another meeting. And I can't remember which one that one was, but at any rate, I got a nice note, both from Arthur Conquest, the Chair of that board, and from Claudia, the Executive Director, thanking me for coming and being, and liaising just a bit with Brookline Adult and Community Education.
Excellent. And we are going to be redoing, reshuffling all of our liaison roles before the end of the year. So we will, all those communications will go out. Mr. Chang.
I attended the Climate Action Committee on Monday, and there was quite a bit of discussion around green schools. And one of the devotion parent named Doron Braca actually made a presentation. He is a green architect and very much interested in obviously in seeing devotion pushing the envelope to a full extent in terms of making sure it's a green building. Gave him a bit of background that I know about Runkel's renovation and that achieved the bronze lead level and silver, excuse me. And at the same time, I think there was quite a bit of questions around the committee about why can we do more? I think, you know, ultimately, it's a balance between costs as well as, you know, what's feasible. The other thing that was actually quite interesting, there was quite a bit of discussion, is about food waste at the cafeteria. Because, and also obviously utensils, that's disposable. And the question is, is there any strategy around how to deal with food waste? And that is something that I've been asked to report on next time when I have that meeting with CAC. And my plan is to maybe have a conversation with our head chef. Mr. Cadwell, Alden, correct. That's it.
Any questions? Ms. Talbowski? Oh. Ms. Stone.
I think Chef Caldwell will have lots to tell you since this has been a focus of the cafeterias for many years now. Actually, even before Alden joined us, we were making a lot of strides there in terms of, I know that the CAC, as well as the Green Caucus, whom I think all three of us met with during the campaign, are focused a lot on that, on the possibilities for composting. And I believe in the superintendent's report, one of our teachers just got an award for something having to do with food waste, new things in using food waste anyway. I'll let the superintendent talk about that. But I did want to add that this is very consistent with what the Green Caucus has been talking about. And I think it's an important piece to add to our ongoing discussions in Capitol with all of the Capitol projects going forward and with the reports in the news focused on the rise in sea levels and consequences for us that I think it's our obligation to continue to look at our buildings, both in terms of how they serve the students, but also how they serve the community and the ecology and what we're doing in that regard. So we'll take that up at Capitol, I hope.
Thank you. Ms. Talbowski.
Yes, I attended the 21st Century Fund Board Meeting last night, and there are two things of note. One, they've set the date for the gala for this coming November, for November 15th. It's a Saturday night. The second piece, there's apparently, and maybe I missed it on the first time around, and other people may have gotten it, a BHS 2020 newsletter. This has to do with their planning process. Did we get the first one? You remember seeing it. Okay. I just didn't remember.
I believe we have received it from the headmaster both times.
Both times. Okay. All right. Well, I just wanted to bring people's attention to it, that it might be a good reading document for when the architects come here. And that's it for.
All right. Any other liaisons? All right then. We are moving on to our next, sorry, of course.
Can I just say one thing to your comments on overrides? So over the course of the last few days, I just, some of it's to reiterate and maybe expand slightly on what you've said. I just, I, you know, over the last few days, we've been asked, in terms of the people who actually create the plans for you to look at and other groups to look at, what does this mean to the plan? What does this mean to the plan? This potential delay or not funding in this year? So, you know, it's not a Plan B, right? Yeah, or it's not, we don't have another plan, right? But I just think it's important that you, at the very least, and other decision-makers, understand some of the issues that are involved here. Now, you know, Ms. Dickoff mentioned one, which had to do with the devotion approval process. And so I've gone back and looked at the letter that we received in July from the MSBA, when B-Space was in the middle of their process. And the letter that I received from the MSBA says, "Because the B-Space Committee has not finalized its overall recommendations for the town's long-term plans to accommodate district students, the MSBA wishes to rescind the portion of its letter of July 9th, 2013, where the MSBA notes that the town should take appropriate local steps necessary to award the contract for designer services." In other words, in that letter, and there's another line that's similar, and in the conversations we had, the conversation was, "We're willing to move forward devotion because you have a plan, a long-term plan, to deal with your issues." And so I, you know, I'd have to question whether anyone would still view us as having a plan. I think the second thing is we will be an OLS under this plan as an elementary school for longer than our original projections. Now, I don't know what that number of years is. Our original projection is three years, right? Is that four years? Is it five years? Is it six years? I don't know. But what I know is that we needed that space by at least 2019 for Brookline High School. And so very soon into the conversations we're having about the longer-term Brookline High School, we'll also have to take up the issue of, what if we have X number of students in 2019 and 2020, and we don't have additional space? What will that look like in terms of scheduling? What will that look like in terms of the school day? What will that look like in terms of class size? And the other thing that's clear is we will clearly, under scenario where there is no plan, no second step in a four-step plan, as you outlined back in September, we'll have to, we'll have to take a much more serious look at policies and practices around a number of things, including class size and our non-resident students. So those are all the things that would have to, at the very least, sort of a beginning set of steps, would have to enter into any conversation about a plan that does not include a second step now. And the one slight exception I'll take is that, is that I do believe, I do believe that because the project at Driscoll allows for four sections per student, or per grade level, and therefore takes students from those buffers, that it actually does solve district problems. And the way it solves district problems is it creates capacity at those schools that are those buffers, which therefore creates capacity at schools that are those buffers, et cetera. And that's how it solves the district problem, by merely taking students who reside in a Driscoll Core and buffer. Thanks.
Thank you for correcting that. That's much more accurate. Any questions? Ms. Stone.
I don't really have a question. I just, I felt a little bit odd after the conversation about the override study committee, your report, that we are not talking about what happened this week, and I guess Dr. Lupini just did. So I'm sort of relieved to have more of that on the table. I think it's very important, what you've just articulated. I did want to point out, though, that despite what the advisory committee voted and its implications, which are real and serious, that the Board of Selectmen is still unanimously behind the Driscoll project and moving to feasibility. The school committee is still unanimously behind the Driscoll project and moving to feasibility, and that MSBA has a relationship with this body and with the Board of Selectmen in moving projects forward. And I am hopeful that they will hear our unanimity and the importance of moving forward as the voice of the town in this case and allow the town to have a robust controversy about what the best way is to move forward, but to know that that has not affected the leadership of the town in its commitment to this plan. So I'm hopeful that the long-term plan is still very much in place and that we will, through town meeting, be able to move it forward expeditiously.
Anything else? So it goes without saying that all the things we have said previously about this project remain true, that there is a domino effect, that there are effects on timing, not only domino effect in terms of space elsewhere in the district, but a domino effect in terms of keeping on pace with long, multi-year projects. And a domino effect in the Driscoll community and frankly, everyone else in town getting answers to very legitimate questions that folks are raising about green space, about parking, about transportation, about the feasibility of the site, about whether we'll support a four-section school, about what we would do under various scenarios, what are creative options? I mean, all these things are why we do a feasibility study and understanding the community's priorities and their residents, the parents, the abutters. There are many, many constituencies that are part of a feasibility study. So if it isn't abundantly clear, the longer we wait to get that information, the worse we will all be. we will all be. Not least of which, because regardless of any of these other things that happen, there are so many other developments in town that people have been talking about, such as Hancock Village, Dummer Street, Marion Street, and the list goes on. The likelihood that we will not need anything at that site is, in my opinion, fairly low, even if one made policy choices to reduce non-resident populations, to increase class size. I mean, those would have to be fairly dramatic in order to imagine some of these scenarios. So at any rate, I think it's very clear that this school committee, the Driscoll community, the entire town needs answers because of these domino effects, and we need them sooner rather than later. So if that was not abundantly clear, thank you for clarifying. All right. We are now 35 minutes behind, so we are going to step on the gas. Public comment. Ms. Coyne, thank you. We have one person signed up for public comment, Sanford Ostro, whose affiliation is the League of Women Voters of Brookline. You have three minutes. Thank you.
So it's five minutes that the panel uses.
Well, it's three to five minutes, depending. So why don't we start with three and see how we're doing?
It'll take five. But I've given you a document that should, enough for all the committee members and anybody else in the audience who might wish to look at it. It's related to the override study committee and is relevant to what was just said. It's on behalf of the Education Committee of the Brookline League of Women Voters with regard to the contrasting views of Metco as presented by the B-Space Committee and the override study committee. I'm Sanford Ostro. I'm Vice President of the League of Women Voters of Brookline. The B-Space Committee identified values of Metco, highlighting diversity and direct payments from the Massachusetts Department of Education, while at the same time pointing out that dropping the program would not provide increased classroom capacity in the short term. To quote from B-Space, when they were looking at reducing student numbers, they said, if they freeze or eliminate Metco, it does not increase classroom capacity in the short term. In addition, it's a valued program that contributes to school population diversity, does not provide solution, given that students are distributed throughout the district, and there's a negative revenue impact of a freeze or elimination of $3,500 per student that could not be met by operating costs. In fact, this number in fiscal year 14 was $4,498. And that, and the total that the Brookline received for the Metco students was $1.336 million in fiscal year 14. It also doesn't include the Chapter 70 funds, where both the Metco students and materials fund students are included in the number of allotment that you get from Chapter 70. The override committee, study committee, presented a different picture, indicating that increased classroom space would be available immediately, as well as in the future, presenting numbers that indicated both that Metco and materials fee students were more expensive to educate than Brookline students, and that such reduced costs could be realized immediately without apparent recognition of the loss of state revenue. From this analysis, Dick Benka, the co-chair of the override study committee, he's quoted in May 8th, he's also quoted in this, in today's Brookline tab, as the following statement: "Some analysis has shown that if the district slightly increases class sizes, or if the town temporarily suspends Metco and materials fee students, the near need for more classrooms could be avoided." More recently, the override study committee met with the head of Metco, and his statement was, "If you don't have space, we won't come." The next page, I'm actually not going to read to you. It's a direct quote from the report that the override study committee made to the advisory committee. And if you actually want to understand some of what the advisory committee did, you take a careful look at what they represented by the override study committee.
We're at the three-minute mark.
"The Brookline League of Women Voters requests that the school committee and the administration help investigate the discrepancies between these reports, issues, and particularly that require clarification are as follows. The override statement says, 'Suspension reduction would reduce the demand and space needs approximately one classroom per year for each program, assuming 20 students. Since the students are distributed over various classes in schools, as stated by B-Space, it is difficult to see how they come to this conclusion, no matter what actions are taken. It is not clear that even immediate dismissal of all current Metco students would lead to this result.'" The override study committee says, "The entire Brookline K-12 growth derived from minority populations over the past 20 years is, that there was, that the minority growth was, over the past 20 years, was minority, two-thirds non-Asian. We wonder what data we used for this statement. More importantly, it is the increase in our student population over the past seven years that has driven the recent space planning concerns. How is statement about minority population over 20 years even relevant? What are the minority statistics for the past seven years?" Finally, "We wonder what data we used to develop Table 5. This table states that the most expensive students to educate are the Metco students, followed by materials fee students, and that the least expensive students to educate are the Brookline resident students. Since the town does not receive incremental income for the Brookline resident students, the information seems counterintuitive. We would like to see the calculation done using direct student costs, excluding capital values and expenditures borne by the town of Brookline, subtracting state or parent contributions made for each particular group of students, including the Chapter 70 funds attributable to each student group, adding the cost of special administrators, and what is implied to be a higher number of IUP students in the Metco program. For clarity, we would hope that each of these items would be separately identified." Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, Mr. Ostro. We appreciate it. It's not our policy to comment on public comment, but I would make one process note, which is, since many of the issues that you're asking about are analyses of the override study committee, I would suggest that you email this to the co-chairs of the override study committee, which happened to be myself and Dick Benka. We will forward it to the subcommittee that has performed these analyses. And I think that those are the first place to address this analysis. But regardless, thank you for coming. Thank you for presenting this to us. And we hope that you make good on your promise to have this be a robust topic next fall. Those are the only people signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else here who wishes to make public comment? All right, very good. We are now only 25 minutes behind. And I am so delighted, moving on to one of the more pleasant topics we have for this evening, I'm so delighted to welcome our new student representative. We will miss Mr. Yu deeply, but we are delighted to welcome Mr. Khan to our midst. Thank you for joining us. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Thank you. I'm Ethan, and I went to HEAT, and now I'm at BHS. I'm a 10th grader. And I'm also in SWS, which is school within a school. And for the past two years, I've been on Legislature and Student Council, which are within BHS, the student-run, and in collaboration with faculty governments committees.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Are there any questions or words of welcome for our new student representative?
Welcome. Thank you. I'm glad to have you here.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We hope...
I understood or read somewhere that there's a second person who's going to be doing...
Do you have an alternate? Is that what we read?
Yeah.
Excellent. We look forward to meeting your alternate at some point, but we're delighted to have you. Please feel free to engage fully in our deliberations. And we very much look forward to updates on what's going on at the high school. I can't promise you, the questions will always be linear. Sometimes we have all kinds of random questions about what's going on. So we're excited to have you here. All right, moving on to our fifth agenda item, the superintendent's report. Dr. Lupini.
Thank you very much. First thing on my report tonight is to welcome someone back to Brookline. Laura Horst is joining us as the Vice Principal of the Lawrence School, officially beginning her new position in August of 2014. Laura currently serves as the Assistant Principal at Diamond Middle School in Lexington, a position she's held for the past two years, but many of you may know her as an English teacher of grades seven and eight at the Driscoll School. Do you know her, Ms. Coyne?
I know.
You do? Okay. All right. Thanks. Where she also completed her administrative internship. And I was fortunate to be one of the people who taught in the program that Laura was part of through EDCO, through the ELI program. Laura brings expertise, a middle-level teacher, and leadership experience, and is here tonight. Laura, we are so thrilled to have you back in Brookline. Welcome. You do. And Rick Rogers is also here, the principal of the Lawrence School.
So I won't take much time. I know you guys are running behind schedule, but I am really delighted to be back in Brookline. I've missed it in the two years that I've been gone. This is sort of, being here, there's a lot going on in Brookline still, and it's a very vibrant community, and I'm delighted to be back in it. I was just there yesterday, meeting with families and students and faculty. And I think my favorite question that brought me right back home was, I think, the sixth grade student who said, "Well, do you know what middle schoolers are like?" And I said, "Absolutely." So I'm really excited to be back, and thanks for having me here tonight.
Thanks, Laura.
Wonderful. Oh, a quick comment.
Just a quick comment. Not only is Laura a superb English teacher, absolutely, I would love to be in her class, but she was also really the linchpin of the seventh, eighth grade group at Driscoll School. She was very steady, very sensible, very forward-looking. And another real plus is that both the kids and the parents adored her. So we are very, very fortunate in having her back in Brookline. And I think that Lawrence School will enjoy working with her, and I know you will, Rick. So welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Welcome back.
Thank you, Laura. And Rick, thank you. Such a, as always, with all of your hires, such a terrific process, really so involving of others, and so thorough, and great job. Kindergarten enrollment. Let me take you to kindergarten enrollment, where we currently have 604 students enrolled for the coming year. Due to our, but based on our, the models that we use to project student enrollment at the opening, on the opening day of school, we are currently projecting a class of 645 students on the first day of school. Remember that our budget reflected a number of 630. Twenty of the 604 students are Metco students. To be clear, all siblings of current Brookline Metco students, that's seven students in total, have been assigned to a school, while the other 13 need to be placed within the next week. We've also registered 24 students through the materials fee program. All children of school employees have been assigned to a school. In addition, all siblings of town employees have been, of town employee children have been placed in schools. Two non-siblings will need to be placed within the next week. So currently, we have scheduled for 30 sections of kindergarten. I've projected them out here in terms of number of each school for you. So what we plan to do is, with respect to the 15 students remaining who need to be placed, that we, they will receive next week a tentative school assignment, allowing them to participate in peak and practice and other orientation programs at the school. Hopefully, those will end up being the schools that they will attend. We will let them know that final assignment, I expect to be able to do that by August 15th, but it will depend on the summer enrollments that come at each of the schools where they're assigned. So a tentative school assignment with a clear explanation, right, of what that means next week, allow them to participate in all the other activities that all the other incoming kindergartners will participate in, and then we'll be able to get back to them, we believe, by August 15th with the final assignment. And hopefully, that final assignment will remain their tentative assignment, if the numbers break in the way we project them to, and if we do our job in the next week in terms of assignments. In terms of some other announcements about some staff members, students, quite a number of those at this time of the year, you may know, some of you do, I believe, that WGBH selected Min Jen Wu Taylor pre-K class at HEAT School as a site to film teacher training videos. They had, both of the pre-K classrooms in that school had been invited to apply because of the excellent feedback received on their work. And in the end, Min Jen Taylor's class was selected, and the video will focus, videos, excuse me, will focus on STEM teacher training and will be used as a national model. And we'll let you know when and where those videos are available. Glenn Gerner, who's a BHS woodworking and engineering teacher, was recently presented with the 2014 Program of the Year Award at the Spring Meeting of the New England Association of Woodworking Teachers. Glenn does a terrific job and has really done some amazing work with his students and with that program, and was recognized recently for that. So congratulations to Glenn. June Bowman, one of our school psychologists at the high school, was recently awarded the 2014 School Psychologist of the Year Award by the Massachusetts School Psychologists Association. Congratulations to June. Jen Rose Wood, an English teacher at Brookline High School, was recently chosen for the Calderwood Fellowship in Writing Instruction at the University of Massachusetts, where she will receive a stipend and full tuition for a year-long fellowship, beginning with a one-week intensive course this summer. One of our Brookline High School juniors, Sam Russell, we've talked about this program before, I believe, we've had students recognized, has won a two-week trip to Japan this summer on the Japanese Exchange and Teaching Program Memorial Invitation Program Scholarship. He is one of 32 participants selected nationwide and will travel to the, am I pronouncing it, is it Tohoku? Got that right? Yes, okay. Region where he will learn about the March 2011 earthquake and tsunami and participate in a Japanese language institute and homestay in Osaka. And that trip is fully funded by the Japan Foundation in Los Angeles. Congratulations to Sam. Two teams of our students from our marketing education program recently competed in the first annual Babson Boston Cup, held in Boston. It's a new initiative of Babson College that provides students with an opportunity to learn and practice entrepreneurial skills. One of our teams, the Brookline Compost Company, their concept was a program to create compost from the high school's waste to be packaged and sold to local farms and community members. They placed second in their competition. So congratulations to them. Another of our team, of our teams was focused on the concept of an online network connecting international students with reputable college counselors in the United States. So congratulations to both those teams and to, where is it? Brittany Stevens, the teacher of that program, who does amazing, amazing work. Our crew team competes, competed in the U.S. Rowing Northeast District Junior Championships. Three boats qualified for the Youth Nationals that will be held in Sacramento in June. And, let's see, a total of 16 of our athletes qualified in these three boats, the most in the history of the high school. And some of you who've been sitting around this table for a number of years know, this has been a very successful program for us, particularly over the last few years. Our performing arts programs had a very busy May. The student a cappella group will perform in the dance studio on May 29th, and Needs Improvement Battle is scheduled for May 30th in the auditorium. In addition to that, we've had Progressions Dance Concert, Student-Directed Drama Festival, and the Spring Music Festival, all held within the last month. Also, I've included in here a note about EDCO. You know, we get quarterly reports from the collaborative. The executive director is now reporting that our budget deficit is now thought to be significant less, significantly less than originally projected. And also, the FY15 budget was proposed during our recent, the recent meeting. I will say that there's a lot of work going on at the collaborative around special education programs and building of programs that's been very exciting for some of us who've been members of a collaborative that has, quite frankly, been focused on professional development for some time and is now moving into a number of special education programs. EDCO's finalized the 15-year lease at the location in Bedford that will house EDCO offices, a therapeutic program currently based in Watertown, and alternative programming aimed at supporting districts in complying with Chapter 222 regulations. Those regulations we're going to discuss at that next policy subcommittee meeting. That's my report. You have something to add to EDCO, I'm sure?
Well, yes, but I had two more questions.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
No, no, I think you did fine with EDCO. That was great. The only question I had in terms of EDCO was Mandville School. And is the plan, my understanding is the plan is that they would be taking that back to the Bedford site, or...
So...
Your understanding.
So, so it's not current, it's not... So, so it's not current, it's not in any of the drawings I've seen factored in at present, although there is additional space for additional programming. And there's been conversation here about how well that program matches up with our programs, the proximity of students who are attending that program, and whether it will stay at Brookline High School. So I don't think that's an initial move, but it's a discussion to come.
Okay. And just two other pieces. One thing I noted in your report that, I know we're short for time, and that's probably why you didn't mention it, but.
Did I skip or did I miss something?
No, no, you mentioned everything, but within one of the reports, apparently, the woodworking group is hosting the New England Student Woodworking Design Competition in the, well, that's why we're here to read.
Right. And that is, that's tonight, Megan?
In the art space?
Yeah, so Glenn is hosting, thank you for pointing that out.
Is it only for tonight?
I believe that's right. Yeah, it's only for tonight. And Glenn is hosting the 2014 New England Student Woodworking Design Competition in the Art Space Gallery at Brookline High School, and it is tonight, unfortunately.
Yeah, that's a shame. And then my last question just had to do with the student who won the trip, won the trip to Japan.
Right.
How does one go about doing that?
So this grew out of the relationship that began around the time of the, right, that's right. That's right. And we actually had a student, I believe, in the year that followed that who won this award, was what, was part of a group of 32. And I believe this is the second student. There may have been more.
So it's an application process?
It's an application process, right.
And you need to know some Japanese or be taking Japanese.
I believe that's right. I don't, yeah, we, yeah. I believe that's right. I believe it's a relationship that a number of the.
I didn't think you had to speak Japanese.
Yeah.
Never mind that.
But it is a relationship that a number of our teachers had developed out of the tragedy, right?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want extra credit for having Redhead and knowing that the compost happens in the.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Duly noted.
Since we don't have any chairman's report, I will only note at the end of the superintendent's report that the superintendent is the, in the new president of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, M.A.S.S.
Thank you.
As the commissioner noted in an earlier visit to Brookline.
Oh, jeez.
Our superintendent's quote is "a leader among leaders," which is exactly how he is treated at all times in this town.
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
So it's just worth noting that we always like to benchmark ourselves against other districts, and the idea that our superintendent was voted by his peers as their president is tremendous.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I had a chance to speak to the group today as part of our spring meeting, and it was terrific, and it was really nice. I had, all the members of our senior staff were there. It was very, very nice to have them all, them all there for this. It was quite a, quite a day.
And at the risk of turning him even more red, that.
I'm sure that's possible.
That, that video should be available.
Oh, yes, yes.
Perhaps we'll have a screening.
Yes, it's probably up on my friend Eric Conti's Twitter account by now.
At some point with popcorn and melted butter, as we do for all of our school committee meetings. All right, moving right along. We are quickly getting back onto track. We have item number six, school committee actions. Maybe these will go quickly. The first school committee action for the evening is proposed changes to the PSB Strategic Plan Core Values and Goals. This is our second reading. We just had a first reading last time. We discussed it. We had a little bit of a sense of the strategic plan report card. We talked about it again earlier this evening. I'm willing to entertain a motion to vote it.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. A second by Ms. Charlopski. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. I'm sure Ms., Dr. Fisher-Mueller will be delighted. Second, oh, by the way, we will send a note to the Strategic Plan Committee thanking them for their service, giving them a copy of the final, and maybe we will, I don't know, laminate it or something, because they, they really did a terrific job. And it was, it was a wonderful example of a town-wide committee where we had residents who were not parents, we had parents, we had teachers, we had principals, we had the president of the union, Dr. Wender Shubo, we had school committee members, we had administration. It really was an extraordinary effort, so we thank them for their service. Our second item is an appointment to the Edco Collaborative Board of Directors for 2014, 2015. I believe this is an appointment and not a vote. Is that right? It's an appointment. We appointed last time. It's a vote. Oh, we'll take a vote. Excellent. Vote to appoint. All right, we will vote then. I will open the floor to nominations, as long as they are made without speeches, for this role. Ms. Stone.
I assume, no, I would like to nominate Helen Charlopski for this position. She has served us ably in the past, and I look forward to her continuing, I'm not going to make a speech. I look forward to her continuing service.
Service. Thank you. That's what you're looking for. Is there a second?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Cottrell, are there any other nominations? Excellent. All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Raise your hand. I'm not listening. All those opposed, one does not call for abstentions, but the chair notes one abstention. Ms. Charlopski has abstained. Congratulations, Ms. Charlopski. Thank you in advance for your service.
Thank you.
Our third agenda item is an appointment to the Edco Collaborative Advisory Council for 2014, 2015, a appointment which Ms. Charlopski until recently held. Are there any nominations for this, Ms. Charlopski?
I would love to appoint Dr. Lupini to be on the advisory council for 2014, 15. He's served us very well as the representative, the voting board member, and I think he will continue to serve on the board in such manner.
Excellent.
Considering that he's on the finance committee, I'm on the executive committee, we have a good voice there.
All right. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Stone. Are there any other nominations? All right, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you all very much. Okay, we've gotten five minutes back. So we are on to presentations and discussions of current issues. A report on the 2014 Brookline High School Cambodia trip. Mr. Green, it is always a pleasure to see you and your students, and we look forward to the stories you will tell us as soon as the AV gets set up and perhaps pictures you will show us.
I can start to make sure that we continue to catch up on the clock.
Bless you.
You need to be by the mic. Oh, sorry.
Hi, I'm Dan Green and.
You don't have a leak.
Oh. I've done this so many times, you'd think I'd know this by now. I'm a history teacher at Brookline High School and also one of the founders of the Brookline-Cambodia Partnership. And walking into this room just reminded me of the first time I came here to talk about this five years ago with my colleague Kay Boynton, where we were coming in front of the school committee and Dr. Lupini to ask about the possibility of building a school in rural Cambodia in a former Khmer Rouge stronghold, and then to bring students there to various parts of the country. And in my mind, I was thinking, wow, I wonder how this is going to be received. And what I can say is that the reception that we received, and more importantly, the support that we've received over four years now, three trips to Cambodia, also the building of the school, really exemplifies what I love as a teacher and as an educator about Brookline public schools. Just the commitment to global leadership, the supporting of teachers taking appropriate risks, and then just the validation of a teacher coming in, and two teachers in this case, coming in with an idea, an innovative idea, and receiving support year after year after year for it. So we're here to thank you for that and for your continued support. Also, one of the fun parts of being a teacher leader of this group is that I get to keep in touch with all the kids that have gone on the trips. And so I haven't purposely been collecting data on what the, how the kids have used this experience, but through our conversations, I do have some data to present. So interesting enough, the students from the first two trips, so we take six kids every year, three of them have actually returned to Southeast Asia in their early college years. Two of them are studying international development, and two of them are studying international public health. And so we're very excited to see what students are doing with these authentic learning experiences. I'd love to tell you more about it, but I think that they'd be able to tell you a lot more about the most recent trip that they took. And so with that said, I'd like to introduce our two chaperones who went on the trip last year, Ms. Harrington and John Andrews.
Hello, thank you for having us here. One of the things we love about teaching in the Brookline schools is what incredible opportunity, what incredible opportunities there are here for us. This was the trip of a lifetime with the best students you could possibly go with. We spent a few days in Phnom Penh, visiting various NGOs. We went to the Brookline Samlon School, way, way, way out in the countryside. And then we spent a few more days in Siem Reap, soaking up the rich, rich cultural history of Cambodia. Just an enormous, enormous thank you to school committee for supporting this, this kind of study trip. We really want to give most of the time to the students, so thank you again. It was wonderful.
Hi, I'm Julia Jun. I'm a senior. Sorry for my voice. I'm getting over a cold or allergies or something, but basically, what was one of the most amazing portions of the trip for us was kind of seeing, seeing how the country is really rebuilding post-genocide. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about two of the NGOs we visited that are both doing just that. And the first one we went to, Cambodia Living Arts, is an NGO that works to kind of rebuild, this is from a show, this is us there, is to kind of rebuild traditional Cambodian culture post-genocide, because during the Khmer Rouge's reign, 90% of the artists living in Cambodia were murdered. And because of that, the generation to follow didn't know really anything about traditional music or culture or dance. So this NGO is working with survivors who know the music and know the traditions to teach the youth of the next generation. So that was really cool. We got to have a little lesson and, yeah, and met some really inspiring people. So that was really awesome. And then another NGO that we visited is called the Somali Mom Foundation, which is an organization that is particularly powerful to me, because I've been doing work the past four years with the Brookline High School Students Against Human Trafficking Club. And the Somali Mom Foundation is a group led, started by a survivor of sex trafficking, Somali mom. And what it does is it works in Cambodia to rescue and rehabilitate survivors, women and girls, of sex trafficking and human trafficking in Cambodia. So that was really amazing to see, to talk to some of the people who work there, and one of the survivor mentors talked to us. And it's, it was really hard to see that and to hear about how base the economy in Cambodia today is in the sex trafficking trade, but it was also really powerful to see, like, all of the work that they were doing. And it inspired a lot of us and me about, like, some career choices or future work that I want to do. So, yeah.
Hi, I'm Susanna. I'm a junior. So we, we made a little PowerPoint, but I don't really know how it works, so we'll just periodically flip through it. So I, when I, I went into this trip thinking that, you know, it would be mostly just about you going to the country and then learning a lot about the culture and the history, but I thought my experience would be just confined to the visit there or the two weeks we spent there. But I realized almost immediately that the trip was about so much more than just Cambodia, but rather was giving me ways to look at all these subjects that I didn't think would come out at all of the trip, and it gave me a way to look at it in a light that could apply it to my life now and definitely going forward. So I would say the two main ways, or two main things those were, were law and education. So for law, we visited, so, okay, the Khmer Rouge in the, was the genocide in the 1970s. And we visited the Killing Fields and also the Tuol Song Prison Museum, which was a former torture camp used during the Khmer Rouge. And it was so, it was so hard going to these places and being at the sites where, like, I don't know, millions of people had died. And I left feeling really angry with people who had committed these crimes and was wondering, how could people ever do this, and what was the aftermath of that? But the next day, we went to the ECC Genocide Tribunal, which our court set up in Cambodia that prosecute former Khmer Rouge leaders who are still alive, and they are all very old, they're all in their 80s now, but they're going through this process, I mean, but they're going to trial for the crimes that they've committed. And we talked to a lot of people at the genocide tribunal, talked to people who gave us background about the courts, and then we also talked to prosecutors. But the most interesting part was we talked to the defenders. We talked to one defender of a, of a Khmer Rouge criminal, and I just could not wrap my head around how he would, how he was able to defend someone who had committed such atrocious acts against humanity. But what I began to get out of it and began to understand was, as he was talking, he began to unravel all these layers and just exposed me to, like, how complex the issue actually is. And that was really surprising to me, because it wasn't something I'd considered before, but it was incredibly eye-opening. And his point was, you know, these people committed, you know, unspeakable acts, but yet they still deserve due process of law, and they still deserve a fair trial. And, you know, also, the people of Cambodia who were affected by the genocide still, they deserve justice. And that was incredibly interesting to think about. And the second thing that it gave me a new lens to look through was education, because we, so we went to Preyavhar, which is a very rural province, and we visited the Brookline-Samlon School and another school called the Rover School. And it gave me this new kind of, I don't know, I just began to think about education worldwide, and especially the connections between our education here and education in Cambodia, because I think, you know, up until that point, I had just taken my education and, like, my, the stuff I'd learned from Brookline School from kindergarten to now 11th grade for granted. And going here was just eye-opening to see how lucky we are, but also how, I think it's amazing that we were able to fundraise and, you know, provide the tools needed to set up this school. And I think we've done an amazing job. But I think also there are things that we can continue working at, and there are things that we can improve, and that we shouldn't stop with just building the school, which we haven't, and we are still working on that, which is something I really appreciate the Brookline Cambodia Foundation for. So I began to look more critically into, like, relationships and, like, what it really means to be a philanthropist in funding a school in a country all on the other side of the world. And finally, it was just really amazing to, you know, have this connection with the kids who went to school and, you know, especially watching, especially watching the younger ones learning how to read and write. And I work with six-year-olds at my temple, and, you know, comparing the six-year-olds there to the six-year-olds in Cambodia and how they're going through, like, the exact same process of, like, sounding out words and practicing numbers and letters. And, yeah, that was a really wonderful moment of connection that I had.
All right. My name is Shahar Amata. I'm a junior as well. So Susanna talked about sort of the, how it applied to her, how the trip kind of helped her understand herself and explore her, kind of her development as a teenager and as a person as a whole. But I think it's also important to emphasize the cultural aspect of the trip and how unique it is to come, to go all the way half the world and get to this place, which is so different, has totally different traditions. And yet, to, like, also look at how it's, everything is so universal, like, there's so many customs, both here and over there, that are, that we share. So let me see. So let me see if it's in here somewhere. I don't know. Yes, this is it. So when we went to, I don't remember if this was at the orphanage or, yeah, this was an orphanage. We, we came in, we didn't really know what we're in for. This tour guide just kind of decided that we should go there. But at the end, we totally connected with the kids. We had a lot of fun. We looked at the, at the building and then Susanna just kind of went off and decided to play with the kids. And then we had like a volleyball match and it was just great to kind of interact with the kids in that way as well. But there were some things that were very different. I don't remember what the traditional dance is called, but when we went to the Cambodia Arts Performance, we saw traditional dance. And that was just something that really resonated with me because when I usually go to other places, I don't really see the, the art. I kind of see the landmarks and the architecture and the attractions, but I don't really see the, the real, like the roots and the rituals that I, I wish to see whenever I go other, to other places. So, so this trip was kind of a way to gain insight into this type of, of this type of not, not, just cultural awareness, I guess. Yeah, so I don't really have much else to say. This is tarantulas we ate, tarantulas.
We didn't bring staples.
We didn't bring staples.
And we took a lot of jumping pictures.
Lots of jumping pictures. Yeah, so even over, even over, so this, if you guys don't know the reference, this is from High School Musical. It's a, it's a movie. But.
You guys have some lift-off there.
Um, but it, it's, it's nice to, like amidst all of the horror that we witnessed at the Killing Fields and all of the tragedy that we heard about, it was still so nice to be able to act the way we do in a totally different setting, totally different place.
It was a lot of fun.
That was a lot of fun. Yeah, we're glad to be representatives of this organization and trip.
There were a few other students who couldn't make it tonight because of other Brookline High commitments. But one, one student who was hoping to make it and just couldn't, wanted to say that we had these very, very intense moments, planned moments, part of the, part of the trip. There were the unplanned moments, the spontaneous moments with individuals, with the children at the orphanage, with a young teacher out at, very, very alone, far away from his fiancee in a rural village teaching, who came over unannounced where we were, where we were staying overnight and having dinner, and he brought a bunch of students and they were just there. And so we played Foursquare. And then Shahar and Max introduced him to Roofball. I don't know how that developed. And it ended up being this glorious hour of play and all the cultural distinctions just melted and we were there having fun in the middle of nowhere.
Wonderful.
And it was fabulous. So from the bottom of our hearts, thank you so much for this experience. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming. I'll ask in a second if there are any questions or comments. I will only say that I was, spent a summer in Southeast Asia in 2001 and spent a week in Cambodia, and I won't tell all those stories since I've already told them, but it's just wonderful for, to see a generation of, of students going through and having that experience. So it's terrific. Any, any other questions or thoughts? Ms. Stone?
Questions? That was a wonderful presentation. Thank you. It's always marvelous. I did want to give Dan credit though. He gave us so much credit for being supportive from the very beginning, but that was after several meetings over probably more than a year.
A year and a half.
Where, where he very, very patiently dealt with our initial worries and skepticism and, oh my goodness, you're talking about Cambodia. Do you realize you're talking about Cambodia, right?
Not, not all of us said that.
And.
Not, not all of us said that.
And so, and it was just, it was so wonderful to be able to work with a teacher of your caliber and inspiration to bring this forward and you really deserve a huge amount of credit for that. So thank you for bringing us along and getting to this point.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, from the sublime to the financial. FY14, third quarter financial report. Typically, the chair does this, Mr. Chang. We're going to give that to you. Since you were the only person who was not in attendance, you can give us the report and you can propose budget transfers unless you want Peter to do it. All right, Mr. Rowe?
Would you like me to begin?
Please.
Okay. Thank you. Let me just get this going here. Did, did you get copies? Okay, so there's. So the, as, as Mr. Chang stated at the top, we have been fortunate as, and working hard as we've gone through this year. And we're right now projecting in the third quarter, a surplus that's approximately equal to the one-time funds that we actually used to fund this year's budget. For those of you who haven't been, remember back to what we did really a year ago. We pledged $650,000 worth of one-time funds to make our budget. And now what we're projecting is that we won't be able to utilize, to use those dollars, we'll be able to come in on our permanent appropriation as we're looking at our total spending for the year. So that really makes a significant difference and helps us in fact meeting our goals that we've set for the FY15 budget. And the areas then, and the attribution for how we've been able to make this really has a lot to do with the way we've held the cost of our special education contracted services down. We've had a number of students who've returned from private placements to in-school programs. And we've had noticeable stability in both the student numbers and the, and, and we've utilized the growth that we've committed to over the last couple of years in terms of building those in-house programs, bringing those students back, putting them in. So that when we look at the numbers, we really see that there's three areas, major areas where we're, where we're seeing some surplus this year in our salary accounts, in our contracted service accounts and in our contingency. And the contingency is because we haven't had to dip in that because of the, the condition of the other two accounts. And this we've done, as you know, despite or in spite of the growth that we've experienced this year in our elementary enrollments, which continues to really be the most significant piece of information that's challenged us. We had 630 students this year. And in a related issue, we are currently projecting a 130,000 of the surpluses in transportation. And that's directly the result of having brought students back from placements that, where we previously would have had to transport them out of town. So if you look across the, I don't know which of these clickers is the right one, I'm sorry. If you look across the accounts on the, on the far right-hand side of the top, you'll see that we're currently projecting just over 260,000 as available in our personnel accounts, 243,000 in our contracted services accounts, and about 150,000 in our contingency. Our total contingency of this year started at 195,000, so the lion's share of that is still available. So that this is really attributable, as I said previously, to the experience that we've been having, especially in contracted services. But we're really seeing it across the board in, in many of our special education areas. And to highlight that number, the, the number has been steady since the first quarter. We've, we, our count that we reported to you in both the first and second quarter was 69 students in private placements. And so that the cost of that, as you noticed, compared to the last few years, really shows that a significant downturn in the pattern of what we've been spending. So that that's where the major area that's been helping us in terms of making the goals that we're making on the budget for this year. Just quickly for the enrollment picture, as, as you all know, this is the way we look and this is the conversation that we're having about our, our struggles with our, our need for additional capacity is because of the significant increase of students of the lower five classes, K through four. We're averaging 624 students where compared to the highest five grades, we're averaging 458 students per class. So it shows the dramatic change that we've experienced over the last few years. We've, we've managed to keep our class size within a reasonable limit, but we're tracking right now at really at the high side of, when you look back to the early eighties in terms of our class size, sorry about this pointer, we're, we're at a point where we're reaching, we're continuing to rise each year. The difference between the green line and the, and the purple line is we decided back in, in 2005 to look back and to make sure we incorporated in our elementary class size all of our special education students. So that's why that line is slightly higher, but it tracks with the, the purple line that, that excluded our mainstreamed special education students for, for looking at average class size count. The, the frequency chart shows a shift to the right, to the higher numbers in terms of the number of occurrences. So that for instance, we have 50 occurrences of 22 students per class at the K8 level, 46 occurrences of 23 students at the K8 level, and 41 occurrences of 21. So you really see where that, that 21-plus average has moved to the right-hand side from where it was back in '05 when you look at that, that significant change over that nine-year period. The, this is the change that's happened at each of the schools. To collapse this quickly and look at it, what you actually see is between, in the last nine years as we've grown, from 38, 86 to 52, 58 K8 students, that's 1,342 students. 35% growth. And you see the dramatic growth at a couple of our schools. Driscoll School is up 51%, Lawrence School is up 50%, and Lincoln Pierce are in the forties. The irony is that our two largest schools, Baker and Devotion, are the ones that percentage-wise actually haven't grown quite as much, but every one of our schools now has at minimum 100, what's the lowest? Baker at 125 more students, where Lawrence has grown the most at 218. So you really see that significance. And that, and when we talk about the source of those students, remember in that period of time, our Medco population's been flat. Our materials fee population for the K8 population is up about 40 students. So this is 1,300 Brookline residents are pushing and have pushed that number over the last nine years. And that's really the, put the pressure on our capacity and as you know, on our budget as well. And that's what the graph looks like if you, if you plot it individually by school. The, from a, from a, from a management standpoint, the, the good news in this budget in terms of why we are able to spend below budget has to do with the way we've managed special education over the last few years in terms of having strengthened the, the management of the department, looking at program expansion within the department, and then carefully managing the services within the department. And you see that when you look at the, the number of students served, which has grown, but as a percentage of the total, we're actually having peaked in fiscal 10, fiscal 11 rather, in October 10. We've actually had a downward trend slightly in the percentages of students that are in total special education placement. So that's really what we're, what I believe we're seeing today in terms of some of our budget savings is the reward for the investment that's happened in the last few years in the number of significant changes in special education and the, and the strong management that we're seeing today. So that's really where we can attribute the, the opportunity that we have in, in the FY14 budget. There, there's certainly still some pressure. We're, we're facing a situation where we've got more aids allocated in the third quarter that we budgeted for, but this partly has to do with the reallocation of aids back to the kindergarten or first grade classrooms. So that it's, it really though, I think still is the sustained change from the model of, of one-on-one pairings of, of aids to students that we had experienced and seen growth in, back in the, the early period up through FY10. And finally, if you look at the, the percentage growth of our special education costs versus our total budget, this I think again really shows what's going on where our total percentage growth of the budget has actually been, been greater than the total percentage growth over these last four years of the special education component of the budget. And that's a dramatic change from what we were experiencing in '09 and '10. So that's really a major opportunity and the major reason why we're seeing, why we're seeing these turnarounds. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Any additions? Mr. Chang?
Thank you, Peter. Thanks very much for pinch hitting for me. I, I want to thank the administration in terms of doing a terrific job, especially being proactive on the special ed side of the, the budget because we all know that sector of our budget very often could severely impact us during the fiscal years without, you know, giving us a lot of time to react. And I think what the administration has done in terms of bringing in services into the town and providing a great product and managing this, the special ed education cohort has been exemplary and they've done a terrific job. And I like to point to, I think the most important part of it is this last slide where if you see back as recently as 2010, the growth of the special education's double digits compared to the regular population, and now it is well below the growth of our regular population. So that is a incredible job well done. Lastly, even though I think our budget is on track this year and we're going to be able to, you know, save on the one-time money, it is a shallow victory, if I would say, in terms of going forward. Nothing to really get excited about at this point, unfortunately. And I think, you know, this committee and the school committee has a very big challenge ahead of us. So thank you.
All right. Questions on the third quarter report? Dr. Jackson?
I just had one quick question and I'm, I'm new to this, so I apologize. If, and if I can take it offline, that's totally fine. But looking at this last chart, I was just trying to understand how you would explain the change between 2012, sort of this interesting 2.37 drop between those 3.9 and 3.8 numbers and sort of wanting to just understand what happened during those years that might account for that. Is that part of the shift that you're talking about in terms of how we've addressed special ed or?
Yes.
Is that just a variant?
Well, it really is. If you look back at the, that five-year period where we had really double-digit growth in special education costs, we were struggling with a number of issues. The, the one year in the middle of that, FY08, right?
Yes.
Was, was one year where we had an anomaly where we, we had a significant number of age-outs of students and, and there was a big change and that then flipped. It wasn't a systematic, if you will, pattern. You know, I think there's been significant work done by, you know, Dr. Schmucker and her team in terms of really focusing on program development, on, on appropriate placements that we've seen over the last couple of years. And if you go back to, I believe it was 10, when we began to invest in, in evaluation team leaders, put the control and the decision-making in the, in one person's hands at, at each school, I think it began to build an infrastructure that I think we're beginning to benefit from in terms, financially benefit from, but certainly there's been significant programmatic. Yeah, development as well.
Ms. Charlofsky?
This is, thank you for your report and thank you for the good news. I mean, we should celebrate some good news that we get. There's one piece that I, I probably should know what it is, but I, I don't know. In the third quarter expenditure report, what is capital?
Oh, we, are you talking about the, we have five categories, personnel?
Yes.
Yeah. Equipment. It, it really means the equipment that we budget in our operating budget. And there's not a whole lot.
That's not under supplies. That's different from supplies.
Correct. This would be for instance, computers. So technology is budgeted in that, in that $486,000 line item. Our, it's primarily. It's primarily our technology, but it would be, you know, custodial of equipment. It would be, you know, those kinds, it's hardware that has a useful life, it's not supplies or texts or materials or pencils or things like that.
Okay. I just didn't remember seeing it before, so I was trying to think what it is.
It's not buildings.
It's not buildings, no, not classrooms.
Ms. Dunn?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Peter. I just wanted to point one thing out, and we've talked over the years about the increased tuition issue at out-of-district placements, and although this is mostly good news, I wanted to, if you could go back to your slide, just show people that this is still an issue we're dealing with. If you look at fiscal '08, when we had 68 children in out-of-district placements, and fiscal '14, we have 69, and the difference is over $1 million between the costs of those two with the same number of students. So you can look at, some of those are going to be because they're in more expensive placements, but a lot of that grow, I mean, you don't, you can't account for over $1 million because of the difference in tuition costs between or among schools.
Right.
That's about, that's about the inflation of the out-of-district costs, which is a continuing issue for us.
Yes, you're correct. We continue to have to face that. It is fair to say, though, one of the things that we have included is what we call ancillary services in addition to just the private tuition, so that's in this number as well. It had been historically, so that's one of the reasons we keep it there. I think in the narrative on the, in the report, we actually break the two out. So our actual private placement tuition this year is in the $5 million range, but to your point, we're, as we see growth of those costs, even though we brought the number of students down, the amount we're spending is still stubbornly high, yes.
Ms. Catta?
As I look at this, and you're looking at those same two years, the state funding was much, was not much more, but was a bit more in FY08 than it is in '14, and we have the same number of students. Is that correct?
Yes. What we experienced, you notice, in '09 and '10, those were, well, it's actually more '09 and '11, when the federal government gave additional, what was called ARRA funding to the, to the states during the Great Recession, I guess it's now called, during those, the retrenchment that happened in that period of time, what the state did was they cut back on circuit breaker funding. So when we got some additional federal funding in those years, we actually lost state funding. And then it's now been restored, and one of the things that the superintendent was saying earlier today was, the Senate budget now has circuit breaker.
Full 75 percent.
Fully funded at 75 percent in FY15. So there's been an increase in appropriation. So they've been growing that appropriation each year, and you notice it jumped up from 11 to 12, and then we get, and then it's grown a little each year, we get reimbursed on our spending, so we would expect actually next year that our, we budgeted reimbursement at $1,009,000, could come in just about at that, but it's going to be based on this year's spending, so because our spending is lower, the number could be slightly under. But it's targeted in that range. Given that the percentage is higher, by spending less, we still may yield that $1,009,000.
Okay. Any other questions?
So as I look at this, a couple of things jump out. You know, first and foremost, it just shows that there's been extremely careful management of the budget, that there's a very sharp pencil being used, if we still use pencils, and it actually reflects pretty hard choices. And I think it's great that we're celebrating something tonight, but not to rain on Ms. Charlofsky's parade, but I think managing to stay within a balanced budget without one-time funds has essentially, with our enrollment, meant that we are continuing to starve programs like technology, like our classroom supports, and many other things, as we experience essentially in a flat cost per student and 35 percent growth in our K-8 schools. So, I mean, what's remarkable to me is that we actually have already, to this point, implemented many efficiencies, so to speak, which we consider service cuts. Seeing things like class size having grown by almost one and a half students per class has already happened. We're already seeing tighter clusters around our, around our number of students per class, meaning it used to be much more distributed, now it's much tighter, given very, very careful attention over very recent years to classroom assignments, to use of buffer zones. So we've already implemented a fair number of things that I think are part of the debate in town right now about what we might do going forward. So not only are these not new ideas, but they're things that we've already gone down the road on, and I would hazard to guess that much of the low-hanging fruit on things like class size and assignments and use of buffers and whatnot has already been plucked from the tree, so to speak. There's certainly more that can always be done, but it's just remarkable to me, as I look at these numbers, that significant efficiencies and service cuts have already been taken as we contemplate potentially further cuts in this. So I guess I would, I guess I'm saying thank you for being so thoughtful about this, but recognizing that these things do come already with a bit of a price. So with that, is there, I mean, anything else? I think that, one of the other things that was clear to me is that the assignment procedures really do drive some of this, and we certainly do experience some summer enrollment that we talked about earlier this evening, so I don't know if there are any other additional observations around that.
Sure. The comment that I made earlier about the 15 students and a tentative assignment, I just want to, I want to make sure it's clear that we have a number of students who'll register during the summer, right, during a summer enrollment period that we have, and indeed both before and after that summer enrollment period. And those students, of course, who reside in a core are assigned to a school. Those students who reside in a buffer are not assigned until that same timeframe. So it's not just these 15 students. These, the advantage these 15 students have because they're already registered is that they will get a tentative assignment, and they will attend all of the kindergarten orientation aspects of our program. Students who register during the summer don't have that, although there are some other things done in the days before school begins after an assignment's made. But they, if they live in, if they reside in a, in a school attendance area, they'll be assigned. If they're in a buffer zone, they'll wait for an assignment until around August 15th. So it's some number of students beyond the 15 who I talked about earlier who will be given a permanent assignment a little bit later in the summer.
So what you're saying is not an inequitable?
It's not just those 15 students. That's correct.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Rowe?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So we need a vote on budget transfers? What do we do? Mr. Chang, Mr. Rowe?
Yes, we had actually included a budget transfers at the Finance Subcommittee, the Finance Subcommittee voted. If you reaffirm that, that'd be great.
All right. Do we need to vote them again, or just announce the vote from, we need to vote them again, don't we?
I think we don't, yeah.
All right. So does anyone, can I have a motion to vote the budget transfers as stated in the Finance Committee meeting that we already passed in Finance?
Well, I'll make that motion.
All right.
And I think if we could just, do you have the slide just to put it up?
I actually don't.
No.
It's not in the water. It was emailed to us.
Yeah, it was actually on an email.
Do you want to, all right.
I remember it from when we discussed it, so I feel comfortable putting the motion forward.
All right. I think we discussed it in detail, we went through all the different pieces of the budget transfer. Does anyone feel, is there any reason not to vote this? I think we can vote this. All right. Did you move it, Ms. Charlofsky?
I did.
Excellent. Was there a second? Excellent. All those in favor? All right, it's unanimous. Moving right along, our technology plan. Dr. Lupini?
I'm trying to figure which one works. Yeah, there it is. Does one of the, the clicker, oh, the clicker, does it? I will, thank you. Thank you. So I have two presentations for you. One on, the first that we'll deal with is on our technology plan. So you've seen some aspects of this before. What I want to do tonight is talk with you about the work that's been done since this was originally introduced to the school committee and to the override study committee, talk a little bit with you about what's in the FY15 budget, and I have some slides at the end here of some work that's currently going on to spend those dollars, to start that programming, and really focus on, just on a couple of the areas. I know I have 40 some slides in here I noted this morning, that I won't spend as much time on each one of those, but on a couple of areas, just to focus on what the goal of this plan is. I will say, the other piece of Monday's evening at the override study committee is that Jim Sturgios, who's been the override study committee member, who's focused the most attention on this plan, we had a very positive meeting with that particular group a number of weeks ago, where we went through what was in FY15. Jim also uses the expression sharpened our pencils a number of times. In terms of just what's been done with this plan, to take a look at the expenditures, whether there was some duplication, or whether there's been some now focusing, but I really want to give a lot of credit here to Scott Moore, to Kevin Stokes, to Jennifer Fisher-Mueller, to Peter Rowe, for the majority of the work on this. It's not, it's not been my work, but I want to take you through a couple of the things that we've really laid out here that we're trying to accomplish between 2015 and 2019. What do we get out of this? Now, as has been discussed here a number of times, you know, this is, this is not a transformational technology plan. You know, my friend Eric Conti, the superintendent in Burlington, would call this the plumbing, right? And it really doesn't go much beyond that, other than it does provide devices for kids, for teachers, it does provide a digital literacy curriculum, it does provide a number of really important things in terms of classroom projection, those kinds of pieces. It does provide some money to incent innovation on the part of teachers that can then be shared with others, and it actually invites some of our partners to join us in those funds, whether it's PTOs, and we've already talked to a number of them about adding dollars to those, these dollars, whether it's some of the foundations that traditionally support us, but it, but it's, but those are the levels we're on in terms of this plan. So let me, let me take you through a couple of pieces of this, if Peter, I can, there we go, I can do that. So you've seen our overall technology goal, which is by 2019, to create the infrastructure, build the instructional capacity, and support innovation for full integration of technology in teaching, learning, and administration of public schools. I'm going to do a presentation for you in a few minutes on park, and there's a lot of conversation about technology on the state level and in many school districts, using park to drive technology plans. We've been clear from the beginning, that's a nice piece, it's a piece we need to put in place in terms of the next generation of assessments that are coming, but it's not what's driving this plan. What's driving this plan is what we want students and teachers to be able to do in I want to mention a few of, as I said, of these, if I can figure out where I am, there I am. So these are the overall areas, the overall technology goal areas, and a couple that I want to mention here, or one in particular, is this notion I mentioned earlier of a K-12 digital literacy curriculum provides a developmentally appropriate scope and sequence. So part of the plan, part of the plan that's been put forward here is the development of that curriculum for all, for all students. In terms of the overall technology goals in resources, we've spent a lot of time talking about providing online resources, making them available to and accessible for students and educators 24/7. They're not even right now outside of first class for our teachers, they're not available. And important, very important to us, a learning management system is used, would be used in grade six through 12. So right now, we have a learning management system that's used by some people, some teachers in some courses at Brookline High School, and in terms of some of the issues that we've talked about, both in student services and in terms of what we'd be able to make available for all students through all classes that they might take, our goal is within the next three years to have a learning management system available for all students in grade six through 12. Very important to us that educators use digital literacy self-assessment tools to gauge their own technology learning needs, and that we provide essential professional learning that's identified as required and provided, and that it's tracked, that we provide those opportunities for all students, or all teachers, that all of our educators know what it takes to utilize these tools in the classroom, and that we provide the professional learning that they need in order to do so. Switching off of teaching for a second, we've spent, talking about the scheduling of our facilities, goodness knows, some weeks lately, it feels like that's what I've done, whether it's the different partner groups that we have and this notion that we have in our budget plan of bringing all of our, our scheduling of our buildings and making it centralized. And we need to have the right kinds of applications in place for that, for fee processing and for a number of other things in order to make some of the things that we've talked about work. So in this area of data systems and culture, we've spent much of our time talking about building, making, having building and district staff have appropriate access to timely and accurate data. It's one thing for us to have built this function, for us to still be, I should say, building this function within our offices, it's one thing for us to have access to that data, it's another thing for you to have access to that data, it's quite a different thing, quite a different value for our educators to have access to that data. You've seen some discussions here, you've heard discussions here about the data available through our literacy projects, through our literacy work, and the way that data is now available to teachers, right? And we want to make sure that that's available to them in a way that they can, they can use it in their classroom and in their instruction. We've talked a great deal about reducing manual processes for sharing data between systems. A great deal about that particular function. So the areas of how our data systems talk to one another, how data becomes available in one function when it's presently available in another, and how those, how those systems communicate is a big, big piece of this conversation for us. This is a really important area in terms of devices. It encompasses all staff having an appropriate device to support their work, that happens in this plan. Every appropriate classroom having mounted projection happens in the plan that we've put forward. Lifecycle management is adequately budgeted, so you know that one of the discussions we've had about the FY15 vision here is to go from a five-year-plus replacement cycle to a four-year replacement cycle, the standard utilized by our town, and the standard recommended by the CIO, that will be in place in the midst of this plan. And the district encouraging and supporting a bring-your-own-device program for students. And I'm going to show you some data. We were asked, many of you know, through the fall, we were asked a number of times about the access that our students, particularly at the high school, have to the tools that they need to function in their coursework in this type of environment that we're building. And I want to show you those, the data that we have available to us from a survey of our students a little bit later on. So we know, and this is one of the areas of our, of our discussion in terms of staffing, and I've said, a number of times said to the override study committee, Jim's particular sub-subcommittee, the, one of the discussions we're having is about what that staffing looks like, and one of the important pieces of that is around our technicians, right, and the skill level of the people who maintain our equipment and provide that equipment for staff. And so we've set some minimum standards. We have a set of meetings coming up in June to really flesh out the rest of this staffing plan, which quite frankly is in here right now in terms of placeholder numbers and some placeholder roles that we know need to be filled. So we have a lot of work to do, as Kevin has pointed out to us, in terms of policies and procedures, right, in terms of the use of data, in terms of what the district supports, in terms of particular programs, and we've just listed here a few of those kinds of things, as well as making sure that all of our documents are readily available for employee access, and that people are aware of those, of those policies that we've developed. So, oh, I skipped network infrastructure, sorry. So we've had a lot of very productive conversations with the chief information officer about infrastructure. You'll actually see some, some changes that we've made in terms of budget within this, this budget. You know that there are dollars both within, both within the operating budget and within the capital budget here, and we've tried to streamline those sources of funding to make sure that things that are in the capital plan belong in the capital plan, and Sean Cronin's been very helpful with that. And I will say, Kevin's been very supportive. I was, I was really pleased, just to, just to... I was really pleased, just to focus this on PARC for a second. We heard today from the two districts that did the PARC assessment on a school, on a total school basis or a total district basis, and looking at the bandwidth they have available there, we, in working with the CIO, will have that bandwidth at an appropriate level, both for the assessment and for, we believe, the needs of our students and teachers within the school for the 1415 school year. So here, just again, some of the details, some of this is in FY15. You know that in FY15, we're talking about bringing in 600 devices, 200 at Brookline High School, 400 at the elementary schools. We would acquire in this plan 600 additional devices annually for three years. We decrease, that first-year inventory increase reduces the ratio from 6.14 students to a computer to 4.03, and more importantly to us, reduces the range. And again, I have that chart in here, you have it in your handouts, and you've seen it a number of times. It increases our overall inventory, it allows us to phase in increase of mobile access to reach a ratio of one full device cart for every four classrooms in each of our elementary schools. And most importantly to us, it makes sure that we provide student access with district support of a bring-your-own-device program, providing devices for those students who can't afford them, and first at the high school, and then a consideration of a middle-level bring-your-own-device program for adoption. And it guarantees that we'll replace our aging devices, as I said earlier, guarantees a four-year replacement plan throughout the district. And some of these I've mentioned before, the idea of making sure that we have that learning management system across grades six through 12, that we're be able to, are able to provide advanced and improved online learning tools for students. You know, we've had some conversations and have budgeted over the years for virtual high school courses. There are a number of vendors, one of them that we've used in some coursework here already and are looking at expanding, is called edgenuity, in terms of providing additional coursework for students who may need it for a variety of reasons, whether they're courses down the road that we don't offer, whether they're courses for students who are on homebound instruction of some sort, whether they're students who require that coursework because of the requirements of the new Act 222 disciplinary procedures. There are a lot of reasons for us to partner around providing online learning tools for our students. In terms of applications, making sure that we have a robust portfolio of contemporary online subscriptions and services, and that we support personalization and individualization of curriculum and assessment through things like edgenuity and other applications. There's a whole array of things here, from making sure that we fully fund our student information management system, to whatever we end up with, whether it's Teach Point or some equivalent in terms of our evaluation support, and to make sure that we can establish an analytics dashboard to support gathering, analyzing, and visualization of essential learning, student learning data for teachers, purchasing of particular licenses, things to support the improved administrative functions and advance the use of data for teaching and learning in our classrooms. This is the area that I was focusing on earlier in terms of innovation and providing funding. You'll see some amounts of money for that innovation, really to support teachers as they try out new ideas, that we can then make sure, make certain are shared with other educators throughout the system, and that we can provide in terms of a watch list of ideas and promising practices for further investigation. We're very excited about the idea. We know already, without the support of those innovation fundings, that our educators are trying things out, and what we're in process of developing are ways to ensure that those practices get shared with others. Professional development's very, very important in this area, so we're talking about workshops for teachers by teachers, we're talking about differentiated professional learning opportunities, and we're talking about online opportunities, we're talking about job embedded professional development in the classroom, and making sure that we're evaluating the effectiveness of whatever we're doing, whatever we're providing for teachers. Staffing, again, you know, we don't know, we've been asked a number of times, so what are the positions, what's necessary? What we've spent most of our time talking about so far are the functions. So we know we need support in terms of project management, in terms of systems administration, in terms of help desk and the technical functions, certainly in terms of assistive technology, digital learning management, and building-based technical support, so that our ETS, our educational technology people at the building level can become coaches, can function more on that aspect of helping teachers better integrate in their classroom and become less the technical support for teachers around the equipment that they're using. And again, I mentioned infrastructure before, so that all of our users can use the full array of technology applications. This group's heard me say way too many times what's happened when we've not been able to provide the appropriate infrastructure, the appropriate supports. People will simply not try to innovate, they will simply not utilize these technologies in the classroom unless they know that they're reliable, and unless they know that the infrastructure is there to support their work. So what you have here then is the work that's been done largely by this group to really break this out over the five-year, or over the period of time through 2019, with a focus on the annual increases over the 2014 base. What you see here is devices in terms of addressing equity, and there's that number that's built into FY15 and the projections that are necessary to lower those ratios over the coming years. In terms of establishing that four-year lifecycle, what's necessary in FY15 that does allow us by the end of this coming year to be able to establish with those monies that will be in the budget, a four-year replacement lifecycle for our educators. Monies for teaching and learning tools, for digital content, for the administrative tools that were referred to earlier in this plan, and monies for innovation, again, showing an annual increase, starting in FY16 with $50,000 that's committed to that work to support our teachers in innovating and sharing their practice with their colleagues. In terms of professional development that's in FY15, again, that's an amount of money that then remains in the budget. What, you know, what's happened here, I think I can say, is that, you know, what I took from the conversations that I've been involved with Scott and Kevin and Jennifer and Peter in particular, is that what we're trying to do here is establish dedicated sums of money, where quite frankly, most of what's been done in technology around professional development or any of these other areas has been stealing from one account, right? To utilize to support these efforts. So, you know, some of the conversations I've had with Scott about lifecycle, what's really happened with lifecycle is that there was an amount of money in an override in the 90s and then dedicated through increases we brought to that budget a number of years ago. But quite frankly, with our growth in terms of even administration or other areas, those, there's been devices bought from that that's lowered our capacity in terms of being able to provide that ongoing four-year lifecycle. And that's happened in professional development, where we've said, wow, we have something we need to fund here, we need to take it out of our general professional development dollars, and then something else suffered. So the great, I believe the great work that's been done by these people in terms of this plan is really putting a stake in the ground of these different areas and what needs to be spent if indeed this is what you want to be able to do in classrooms and for teachers and for students. And then staffing, again, there are plug numbers. Again, by the end of June, we believe we'll be able to talk much more specifically about those functions that I mentioned earlier. And in infrastructure in terms of the network. Now, this is one of the areas where we've begun to try to bring some additional reason to this in FY16 and beyond. This year, Kevin Stokes, Sean Cronin, were very, very supportive of getting the job done, essentially. And when that needed to be done through the CIP, the monies are there, and when it needed to be done in terms of what we put forward in operating, it's there. And so when we sat down to really refine this plan before we went back to that override study subcommittee, we said, let's really take a look at what belongs in capital. Quite clearly, the infrastructure money in terms of network belongs there, it doesn't belong in the operating budget, and what really belongs over here in operating. And so you'll see in FY15, you'll see some money in the capital improvement plan for mounted projection. And so what we've done is we've brought that over to operating. And so what you see there is the beginning in FY16, those monies are moved to operating of 135, and then there's an additional $25,000, and then $20,000 each of those years that allows us to get to our goal of that classroom projection. And so here's the totals, which I believe, Mr. Rowe, if I'm correct, nearly match up with the projections that we've provided in each and every one of those years in terms of the override. Certainly FY15 is what's included in our operating budget. Here, what we really did was focus the infrastructure in the CIO's budget. So the CIO has an ongoing budget from the capital improvement plan, and essentially what we said here, if you look at this and mobile cards, is that if you increase the CIO's budget, ongoing budget, and he will dedicate $80,000 of that per year to schools, and if you provide us with this level of mobile cart support, in order to provide the carts to include the devices that we'll have in each of those schools at one cart per every four classrooms, then that will make it work, then that's the plan. And indeed, if you were comparing this now to the capital improvement plan which was put forward earlier, you'd see that the numbers were larger in those outgoing years of 16 and 17. And that's one of the efficiencies, I think, that we brought to this by being able to look at this in terms of the interaction of the capital improvement plan and the operating plan, and make sure that we were getting what needed to be done in this period of time, and making sure that those dollars were actually in the right places. Yes?
I'm sorry, this is probably me just not quite understanding.
No, it's probably me on about my third presentation.
So, so there are a lot of those charts, the last several charts had places where there were big numbers and then there were lots of years with zeros. When we see a zero, are we to assume that that's not simply been left off for that year, but that it has moved somewhere else?
So, so there's two things. So first of all, when you see a zero on these charts.
It's somewhere else.
Now, when you see a zero in these charts, it means there's no increase, it means the number's 75,000.
Oh, it's increases, I'm sorry.
In these.
Okay, that's, like I said, okay.
Now, that's not true, let me answer your question, though. That's not true in the capital improvement plan, right? In the capital improvement plan, this is a year by year. So what it means there is that what we're trying to do, really focus here, is that in the capital improvement plan, we're really trying to focus on infrastructure. The ongoing commitment here is in infrastructure. Okay?
Okay.
So this chart, really, you've seen a number of times, we like it, we put it in every presentation, it really shows what our current ratios are. And again, thanks to our PTOs in some of our buildings, students have some form of robust access in those buildings, right? Teachers have robust access to overhead projection in some of those buildings, but not in others. Because quite frankly, this has been driven largely by the PTOs working in conjunction with Scott Moore. And so what this plan does in terms of even in year one, is it changes that ratio from slightly over six to slightly over four in one year. And you will see that as, and I'm going to talk in a minute about what Scott's doing to really, to bring this plan to life, but that even in the planning stage, we said that the majority of these devices were going to go to places that have those highest ratios in order to bring them down. This chart, we're really excited about the work that was done. Thank you again to Scott Moore and to Deb Holman and her staff, because we asked students a series of questions. There were debates, if you remember, the override study committee meetings early in the year about what the debate was in terms of, particularly this question number two about students and their access. And the fact of the matter is that I think we were saying at the time that we thought it was right around 30% of our students at Brookline High School did not have day-to-day access to a device that was theirs, that they could bring to school and use to engage in the teaching and learning in their classrooms. And essentially, the answer to that question is that it's 32% of the students either sometimes or do not have that access at all. And we've taken some steps in that area that I want to highlight for you, and there are some other things planned. So these slides are slides that Scott's using, and I'm just going to try to touch on some of the pieces. I'm sure we'll be back in the fall with a much more detailed presentation as to what's actually happening, what we've done. But there's a couple of things that are happening now. One is lifecycle maintenance. So what Scott's engaged in right now with principals is how to take that lifecycle maintenance to a four-year plan, adding inventory to help address the school access equity that I showed you in that recent slide. And then something we talked with you over the last month or so about, issues in terms of our coordinated program review. We shared some of these observations with advisory. It just happened we were getting some of those pieces of feedback in the middle of that process. But these are areas where, quite frankly, our program report, and Dr. Schmucker will correct me where I'm wrong here, our coordinated program review is going to say very clearly that in a number of areas where technology is needed for the needs of certain student populations in certain programs, our teachers are not waiting for our technology plan. They're purchasing it, they're downloading the apps, whatever's necessary, whatever's necessary, right? And that's one of the major areas in terms of coordinated review that we will try to address in this plan. And as we said to principals the other week, that may require some massaging of our original ideas of where, what certain technologies were going to be that we were going to purchase and where they were going to go. So the next step, again, Scott's meeting with K-8 principals he did the other week, and the high school around this, how this will work, reviewing current inventories, determining lifecycle replacement needs, determining new needs in terms of the hires that we're going to bring on in terms of our growing student population. And really looking at these other areas, in particular, PTO contributions. We still have some PTOs that want to continue on with some of the initiatives that they've worked with us, and we're working with them on those areas now, right? And we're trying to figure out what's the right point to try to work with them in terms of looking at innovation and those kinds of ideas instead of these other purchases. But for now, a number of those areas are going to continue. And then provide an initial budget for planning. So we're looking at staff computers, we're looking at labs, we're looking at classrooms and learning centers, our existing mobile, beginning the shift from five to four years, looking at those coordinated program review needs, only one of which I've cited for you. And again, what Scott's laid out is this piece to begin the planning, as he's talked with principals, about what's the current access to computers for student use, and what do we believe under this plan we have in the budget to provide that new access to computers for student use. This is different than the other chart, and the other chart really says you have this many students in the school, you have this many devices, this is the ratio. This is really in terms of the actual computers available for student use, and so when you compare those, you're going to find there's a difference. So this is our timeline, inventory cleanup is ongoing, next steps, the spring, we had a next steps meeting with the principals in late May, we'll finalize plans in early June, order July 1st, and be implementing in summer and fall for the FY15 portion of this plan. And the other thing Scott's spending a lot of time on and talking with Dr. Fisher-Mueller and me, yes?
And this may be self-evident, but I'm not clear, it's this year or next year that this is happening?
This is happening now in terms of the FY15 budget. Yes?
So that in July, this July?
So these are specifically components, now I've shifted slightly now, and I'm talking specifically about the FY15 budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we're doing a lot of work and talking about some additional work around the access divide, in terms of making sure that students have access to devices, access to the internet to support and skill development related to teachers putting courses and resources online and related to teacher expectations. And so one of, some of the initial actions have been, even some this year, on a pilot basis, to provide Chromebooks for student uses with cases in the school libraries for loaners. And it shouldn't surprise you at all to know that they are heavily used. To purchase MacBook Airs for students, to work with the BHS leadership team to identify those students who could benefit from having those devices. To provide MacBook Airs for extended loan from the BHS library. To provide MacBook Airs for extended loan from the BHS library. And we've actually talked about a pilot program in the middle level as well, in those libraries. And to work across town school departments to address internet access issues. We continue to explore the issue that I talked to you about a while back, as to how to divert some of our bandwidth at different times of the day when the access in the schools doesn't require it to other areas like public housing. So we continue to investigate those pieces. We've been in some really interesting conversations, in particular with public housing, about some of the things that Comcast and other cable providers do and don't do, and shifts in their policies over the last number of years. Quite frankly, these things are going to require us to involve school committee, they're going to require us to involve the Board of Selectment in some of these conversations. And we're trying to craft a plan as to sort of, how to bring those people all together to begin this conversation, to make sure that our students have that robust access that they need. And that's it. That's where we are. So we're, so this is good news. Yes, on one level, this is a plumbing plan, right? This is a basic architecture plan. But on a whole nother level, we're going to be able to begin to put the tools in teachers' hands, in students' hands, that they require to access where we're going in terms of the curriculum in each and every one of our classrooms, and we're very, very excited about that. So thank you for your support on the work around the FY15 budget, and in terms of the work that we've been able to do in laying out this longer-term plan, that as I said, I think we've begun to get some rather positive feedback on from the override study committee. Happy to try to answer any questions on this particular group of slides.
So the good news is that this isn't quite Groundhog Day. This is the third time, perhaps, we've seen the presentation, but each time it's better and different, so unlike Groundhog Day. So, thank you for that. Questions? Dr. Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Lupini. This is great and very exciting, and I totally, totally appreciate the plumbing plan. You have to have it to use it. So, you know, you got to walk before you run. I do, you've referenced, there are a couple of things that strike me about this. The overall goal is to get to full integration of technology and teaching and learning and administration, et cetera. So clearly, you know, as you get the plumbing, you move in that direction. And you've referenced a couple of places where some of that seems to be happening, either from the learning management system that's been at least introduced into high school, and then some of the issues that you mentioned that are trying to get addressed around expectations. And I guess I'd be curious, going forward, if there's a way to help us have a view in to what sounds like a bit of a parallel track to the plumbing, and to the expectations, and to the use, and maybe the incentives, carrots or sticks, to get teachers and others using, because, you know, you build it and they will come, doesn't always work. So I'm curious if there's a way for us to hear about those things in parallel, under the assumption that by 2019 we'll be plumbed and maybe off and running at least in some direction going forward? Because it'd be neat to see all that together with the plumbing happening.
Do you want to say a word on?
So it is those phases, right? And the plumbing that's beginning. And what is happening right now that isn't stated through the budget plan is around the curriculum and instruction revision that's happening. And in order for this technology to be fully infused, it's going to take the redesign of lessons and of curriculum. And that's work the coordinators are doing right now with teachers.
And the other part is, I do believe, I mean, we've had some pretty interesting conversations about coursework that's stamped, if you will, as being technology-ready for students, and those innovation dollars. And I've had, I've shared this with them way too often, a long time ago in another district, had a lot of great experiences around providing those kinds of incentives, much like our foundations do for us now. But the key to all of that work, I believe, is the opportunity for people to share their practice, right? For innovation summits, if you will, or for those people to be given opportunities to go in and coach others, right? And to sort of grow those best practices and be able to share them among colleagues. So all that's part of the plan.
And that's great, and I think it'd be great at whatever point makes sense, from your perspective, to put all those pieces together.
Yes.
So we can really see, like, the whole thing moving.
Yes. Right, and we will. We're not there right now.
No, no, but yeah, when it's time, it'd be great.
Yes, thanks.
All right. Ms. Powell?
Just a, I'm having trouble with the technology here. A quick comment and a question. The comment is just that I was really taken with, right in the middle, you had your slide 19, in which you had a lot of thoughtful line, bullet points on professional development, and basically, you know, bringing, you know, taking off with the technology, and I think with the summits and the peer learning and the examples and everything, that's where things will get really exciting. The question, I guess, right at the end, you got to the equity issue and the access, technology access out of school, and I, I guess my question, when I, the very first time I learned about flipped classroom, I was completely, you know, sort of taken with this idea, and I think it has to do with my own school experience, because I was like the kid who was always staring out the window and not, you know, just really disengaging. I didn't do very well with the one-way delivery, extended one-way delivery of pedagogy, and this whole idea that you don't do that in school, and that at home, kids can do that, and they can do it, you know, on a device, seems like, boy, that would have worked for me. So I, you know, I think, well, that'd probably work for everybody, you know? Which of course isn't true. So, I mean, I think part of the challenge is simply getting everybody wired so that they have access, but it could also be, you know, you can load stuff onto devices that come out of the library or whatever. And I guess my question is, you know, to what extent is that happening in, you know, is that part of the future plan? Do you have a lot of it happening already? And how does it integrate with the technology plan?
So, just so that everybody understands, the idea of the flipped classroom is to, the teacher puts on video the lecture element of that class that then students actually access at home. And what's nice about that, too, is that they can stop and rewind and go back and work through that video at their own pace. And then when they're back in the classroom, the teacher can actually work directly with students, students can work in groups. The idea of being flipped is that you're not at home doing that homework by yourself, you know, and when you get stuck, you don't have anyone to talk to. And then in school, when you're, you know, listening to that lecture, so that's the flip. I think another point that's important to understand is that there are classrooms where the flipped classroom, if you will, doesn't make sense, because there's not that lecture element of it. So it's not about every single classroom getting to some element of flipping. Now, all of that being said, we have some great examples of flipping going on right now. What's difficult is it's not being encouraged greatly. We are not encouraging it because not all kids have access at home. So we don't want that happening on a regular basis. So it's that we're in that very difficult time. May I say this? So the plan for the future, okay? So folks who say, well, how many flipped classrooms are you going to have? We don't say, how often do we want cooperative learning to happen? We don't say, how often do we want, you know, a lecture-oriented or a flipped classroom? What we say is, what are the best practices that actually have students learn on a regular basis? And that is about that infusion of technology that is seamless, in the same fashion that you folks are sitting there with your devices right now, that it's not a plan that you, yes, and in some cases, that's true. Absolutely. There are places where that pen and paper still apply.
Good. Ms. Stone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things I was doing was trying to remind myself by going quickly to the web about some articles that I'd read recently about student data privacy and the problems that are being encountered with the increasing use of online educational tools, the very real, huge, huge money that can be made off of mining the data that just comes from knowing where students are clicking, and how many times, and all of those things. And I just want to be sure that as we move forward bravely into this new world, that that is front and center. I know that the Department of Education has released guidelines on this. I am absolutely certain that those guidelines will not keep pace with the changes in technology and the ability of student data to be mined. And I just think that not just for student safety, but the very real issues around privacy, and not feeding the corporate structure that is being built upon educational technology moving into our schools. So I hope that's a very, very big part of the discussions that are going on.
It's a very big part of the discussions, yes. And, yes, Mr. Stokes in particular is pushing us hard on that issue.
Great.
But it's really front and center of all of our conversations, including the conversation we're about to have.
Okay. And I mean, I know how difficult it is, because I don't think anybody really knows how to protect and still move forward with it, but I just wanted to make that point. I was wondering, you have on one of our goals for technical issues to be solved in 72 hours. And I'm wondering if there is a technical system that affects the ability of teachers and students to use online sources, whether 72 hours is a good enough goal?
Well, it'd be an improvement over where we are now.
That seems like a really long time to wait for a technical issue to be resolved.
Is there anything else? It will be a whole lot better.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm, right.
Are you here? Maybe it's a short term.
Things in the lateness of the hour.
I'm just putting that out there.
Right. Quite frankly, it's a plug number for now because it represents an improvement. We agree that we don't believe, in this type of environment, if you're in, if you're at X point in 2017, or 18, or 19, that that standard's going to be acceptable.
Okay. And the last thing is, I say somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but one of your first slides said that a goal was that students and teachers would have technology available and access 24/7, and I believe actually that sleep is more necessary for both teachers and students, and so I take issue with that particular goal.
Duly noted.
Excellent. Any last questions? Thank you. It is always remarkable to see that the educational work of the district continues despite a constant and never-ending stream of other things.
We're trying.
To think about. Thank you for doing that. So, we are now almost an hour behind. You have a half an hour to do PARK, which is the field test, which is so important. Just noting the time.
Help me. Or I'll fall further behind, right? So, great, thank you. So let me lay out why I'm here with this presentation tonight. I have sent the school committee a letter recommending that we implement the PARK assessment in grades three through eight, and nine, and 11 for 2015. So I want to take you through the rationale for that recommendation, what's happening in Massachusetts that's driving this choice that each school district's been asked to make, et cetera. So this really lays out what's happening in Massachusetts around the Massachusetts Plan for a two-year, as they're calling it, test drive of PARK. In 2013, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts voted on this two-year process. In March through June of this year, performance-based assessments, end-of-year assessments were being field-tested, including in every one of our elementary schools. Between June and October, districts will choose PARK or MCAS for implementation in In 2015, operational PARK and MCAS testing, and then in fall of 2015, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education votes on whether to adopt PARK. A really important part of this that goes into this recommendation for us is this next piece that says in 2016, either PARK is implemented in Massachusetts, or we transition, begin the transition to another next-generation assessment. You notice that what is not up there is continue with MCAS. Okay? So I'll talk a little bit more about that, and I know you may have some questions. There is no option on the table that suggests that MCAS, in its present form, would continue to be the assessment in Massachusetts. It will be as PARK or some other next-generation assessment. So, that's where we are. Where we are today is we are at the beginning, beginning two or three days, right, of implementing end-of-the-year assessments in those schools where we're piloting them. So the Springfield Test was designed to allow students to experience the new computer-based testing format before it counted, allow the department to determine the fairness, validity, and accuracy of test questions, and refine the test before it becomes operational, and no student, school, or district results would be reported for anyone participating in PARK. Most schools in Massachusetts participated. Public schools charter schools, about 81,000 students in 345 districts and 1,050 schools, eight of them ours, students in grades three through 11, and grade 10, the end-of-the-year assessment in some places. We are only giving this assessment in grades three through eight, and a representative random sample. And about one-third took paper and pencil, two-thirds taking online. All K-8 schools participated in the PBAs in March and April, and they've been collecting feedback on these different elements, and beginning to report that feedback out to us in terms of what people have said so far. In terms of us, so we have a great, great team that you heard from earlier in the year around the PARK field test. And they've worked really carefully with teachers, with students around this implementation, and gathered some initial feedback. So what our team is reporting, based on the feedback that they've received from our colleagues, is that technology worked well, but we will need more computers for full-school testing in the future. So I think I've said to some of you, I'm not sure if all of you have heard, that in a PARK world, or a next-generation world that requires an online assessment, in the technology plan that I just showed you, we will not be able to implement fully an online assessment until 1617, 2016, 2017. So Pearson will need to improve their tools for testing. There are a number of them. I'll leave that to people who've been more involved with it to describe some of them. There are some interesting stories around the tools. Students experienced challenges with a number of these skills that we talked about before, dragging and dropping, scrolling and tabbing, formatting of the tests, keyboarding and typing. Those were challenges for a number of our students in the online environment. But students reported being excited to take tests on computer. By the way, that's something we heard from colleagues today. Eric Conti, the superintendent in Burlington, where they did the test entirely district, entirely online, said that kids were very excited to take this online assessment. He added, I'm not sure that would be the case two years from now, that we're going to have that same level of excitement in that world, but they were very excited to do that. There were issues involving, that our people noted in terms of English Language Arts and Mathematics, students unclear about how much they were expected to write, because they saw a box this big, and they didn't know that the box could continue if they wanted to keep writing, so they wrote this much. The vocabulary used in instruction and question, often above grade level. Students seemed to have difficulty incorporating the content of videos into their responses. In math, questions were wordy and often above grade level. Students seemed to have difficulty in typing their answers to math problems, and questions had multiple parts which seemed to cause confusion for many students. Those were some of the observations. Teachers are seeking more information on how writing prompts will be scored to better prepare themselves and students. Students seemed calmed, relaxed, and hard-working throughout the test, though many did become tired by the third day of testing. Observers noted great variability in the strength of students' typing skills, particularly in the lower grades. And students completed an online tutorial, but there's a need for a more kid-friendly, comprehensive tutorial, as I remember from this discussion, possibly one that differentiates between a third grader and an eighth grader. Might be good. Current status, we're doing end-of-the-year tests at Lincoln, Lawrence, and Heath. They're underway. They go through the first week in June. We're looking at our technology needs. We're collecting feedback from teachers, administrators, parents, and students. We can... We continue to, in fact, the team did a great presentation for the parent leader group a few weeks back. We continue to share feedback with PARK, Pearson, and the department, and we're listening carefully to what the commissioner's telling us about 2015, which again is why I'm here. So, we have a number of questions to answer. Question one: Will your district administer PARK or MCAS for grades three through eight in English Language Arts and Mathematics? So, we need to choose all PARK or all MCAS tests for the grades, and for both subjects. There's not an opportunity to differentiate. We need to indicate the percentage of students who will take computer-based and/or paper-based PARK tests. We, if we went to PARK for next year, will need to have some schools do online and other schools do paper pencil. We will not be able to do all schools online. And while I need to give a preliminary response to that question, if indeed our response is to utilize PARK, the final answer that I give on this particular question I wouldn't need to provide until October, when we'll have some additional time to determine the answer to this question. And so, in nine and 11, and we also have a choice to make about whether we'll administer nine and 11. I've recommended that we administer nine and 11. We will not have had any experience with PARK if we don't, and PARK becomes the assessment in 1516. So, it can be separated from grades three through eight. We can make separate decision for English Language Arts and Math, and we can make a separate decision for nine and for 11. And you see that there, what the assessments actually are for each of those areas. The grade 11 English Language Arts, the Integrated Math III, and the Algebra II tests qualify students to take credit-bearing courses in all-state colleges. In other words, a student who achieves a certain score will automatically have available to them credit-bearing courses, and would not have to take a remedial course at those colleges or universities. But the current competency determination requirement is in place through the class of 2018. By the way, that does not mean through 2018, right? Although it will have to be there in terms of makeups, but it means for the class of 2018. Now, just, since it's just all of us here, right, that's actually going to go longer. There's, and all these people, the newspaper and the TV cameras, I mean, there's a real belief that the competency determination will be in place probably a year or so beyond that time, until they'll be able to deliver a competency determination exam that's valid enough to utilize for those purposes. So, all students in grades five, eight, and high school will still participate in the MCAS Science and Technology Test. There is at this point in time, although, as Dr. Fisher-Mueller I know pointed out in a response to one question, there is at this point no plan for a Science and Technology Test through PARK. So, PARK participation includes both performance-based assessment and end-of-the-year portions of both math and English Language Arts. So, here are the recommendations in terms of devices. You'll notice in smaller schools, they're saying minimum number of devices, one device for every two students. In the largest tested grades, it's really about the number of sessions going on at any one time, and our capacity to put a device in front of students. Again, our bandwidth, we do not believe by next year will represent any problem to us in terms of PARK testing. And the other consideration, quite frankly, in terms of those devices, is do we really want to commit all of those devices to PARK for that period of time? Or would we like to leave some of the devices for what's going on in the rest of the classrooms? We think we'd like to leave those devices for teaching and learning. So, here are the dates. Remember that a school participating in PARK must take both the performance-based and the end-of-the-year, and that these dates do not include the MCAS window. That's a slightly different window for the Science and Technology assessments. So, PARK is a timed test, and since it's late, I won't do my rant about that again this evening, but I think you're welcome. But I will say, one of the things that we have seen is that because of the amount of time that's been set, they've essentially taken, I believe, the amount of time for the test and added 50% to that. So, we did have a pretty good experience in terms of the amount of time available for all students for the assessment. Principals actually gave us very positive feedback on the length of the testing sessions. And if a student does have an IEP, or does have an ELL plan, they do have untimed nature of the test, okay? Districts can administer computer-based and/or paper-based tests, our choice by school. Similar accommodations for students with disabilities as the MCAS accommodation. However, there will be, beyond 2015, when, if PARK becomes the assessment in Massachusetts, there will be no MCAS alt. This is a major issue for a number of my colleagues, who are wondering what those students who've participated in putting together some type of alternative assessment, some type of portfolio, will do. We're told that Massachusetts intends to develop their own, to continue to develop their own alternative that's portfolio-based, but we don't know that right now. And additional supports for ELL students, as an example, general directions read in the student's native language. Accountability will be different in 2015. This is another important issue for many districts. So, only schools that administer PARK, their level will stay the same. We're in a hold harmless year. And not only in a hold harmless year, but the fact that the 2015 results will never be part of a calculation going forward. So, you know that three to four years are used in that calculation. So, if PARK is adopted for 16, then PARK numbers will be used in looking at the school accountability measure, but 2015 will never count in that. And schools that administer MCAS will continue, right? So, if a school's level two, all of our schools are level one or two, and the school through PARK improves to level one, they go to level one. If somehow through the PARK assessment they drop to level three, which is not going to happen, they'd remain level two. It's a hold harmless year for us to try out the assessment, again, and the results. Yes, we'll receive data. At one time, we told you we wouldn't. That's because that's what we were being told. Now, we're being told we will receive data. Individual student data reports, parents will receive them. I'm not going to try to explain at any time of the night equa percentile, but particularly not at this time of the night. But the department does claim that they have a methodology that will allow MCAS scores, MCAS computation, or MCAS overall scores for schools and districts to be compared to PARK scores going forward. And I'll allow Corey Stott to come here and tell you her views on that particular calculation. She has some strong views. And we'll still get student growth percentiles, because remember, student growth percentiles are not dependent on the assessment, right? They're dependent on the comparison of that student to the 99 other students who they've been compared with based on their history in terms of a number of factors. So, they are particular assessment agnostic, right? So, we will get student growth scores. So, here's the timeline. We received instructions this past Monday on how we can go on and log in our choice. We need to register our decision if we intend, but if we want to be guaranteed to get PARK, we need to register our decision by June 30th. Beyond that, we can register up till October 1st, but we're not guaranteed that we would be considered for PARK at that point. It will depend on the budget, quite frankly, at the state level, as to what's available to support MCAS testing, and what's available to support PARK testing. So, by October 1st, we need to, is the deadline for our decision, and then I have about 30 days after that to decide if we've gone PARK, to decide whether we'll do technology or paper pencil by school. This is just a comparison. I'll leave that to you in terms of your packet, to compare what happened in 2014 in terms of field test to 2015, which they're calling an operational test. So, on this one, just correct one thing for me. Thursday is June 19th, not June 22nd, right? And so, what we've laid out here is for me to present this to you tonight and try to answer any questions you may have. Our recommendation is given the move by the Commonwealth to PARK, or another next-generation test for 1516. We recommend utilization of the PARK assessment in spring 2015 for grades three through nine and 11. I will say, in a straw poll that was done at a drive-in that the Superintendent Association sponsored on Monday, that was the view of the majority of superintendents in the room. We're recommending, we've discussed a public hearing on this recommendation on Thursday, June 5th, with school committee action on Thursday, June 19th. You should know, because you may hear it, that there's some discussion going on statewide. We had this discussion actually the other day, about whose decision this is, right? The department won't take a stand on whose decision this is. So, a recommendation of Mike Long, legal counsel to the Superintendents Association, is that this represents a policy decision, therefore rests with the school committee through a recommendation from the superintendent, and that is how we will proceed. That's how I believe we should proceed. So, we've given you a recommendation. We're happy to answer any questions for your consideration. And again, we've talked about this particular timeline in making that, this timeline and methodology in making this decision. Happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Lupini. Thank you, everyone. It's late, but this was a really important one. The timeline's important. And so, this is certainly one opportunity to answer questions. We can also email questions to you. We will have a public hearing. We can ask questions then. We can ask questions during the final vote. This is not the last chance. This was just starting the process going. So, please do, though, if there are questions, now ask them, but know that this isn't the only opportunity. This is going to take time to digest. Dr. Jackson?
Thank you again for the presentation. I noticed in the timeline, and you referenced the next-generation possibility that might not be PARK. What are the odds, or do we have any indication at all, as to whether this is going to be worth the effort? Because they don't pick PARK, and they pick something else. Do we have any sense of that in this? Because one question that came to mind for me was, in thinking about how many initiative teachers, initiatives teachers are managing, the things we're managing, all this sort of stuff. You go to the trouble to sort of take on PARK now, and then they decide, oh, well, we didn't like PARK, we want to go with something else, and then you have to do it all over again. And I'm just curious if we have any sense of that at all.
So, it's a really good question, and I actually asked the commissioner that question on Monday. So, what did that mean in terms of a timeline? If it was a PARK-like MCAS, that was one term that was thrown around, although there are other companies developing next-generation assessments, right? So, it seems to me, if it's not PARK, it could be Massachusetts developing a next-generation MCAS, or it could be going in one of these other directions. And the timelines on those are different, although, as you point out, this issue of really going through field testing, again, although some of those products are further along, right? But field testing in terms of giving our schools, our educators, our parents, our communities, an idea of what those assessments look like, would certainly not be implemented in 2016.
Ms. Stone? Oh, sorry, Mr. Glover, you had your hand up first.
Sure. I was just wondering, it wasn't clear to me what the effect would be on the cohorts that had to participate in the PARK in terms of the overall amount of testing that they'd have to take through their career. Would it increase the amount of overall testing? Would it stay the same?
So, increase or stay the same from now?
In comparison to what they would have to do.
From what we do now? This is, so, these are, there are nine sessions.
Yeah, but you've got PBA and EOA. You've got both.
But what's the total, then?
I don't know what the number is.
I thought the total was nine. Is it more than that? I thought the total of the two was nine. You will check, but I believe it's nine sessions between the performance-based assessments and the end-of-the-year, and that does represent an increase over MCAS. The difference is that MCAS, pardon?
What does nine represent?
Nine total sessions. Sessions.
For each student?
Yes.
Over their, over their year?
Year.
Over one?
Yes.
I guess my question was even more, was broader than that. I was thinking, for, you know, if I'm a ninth grader, and I'm taking PARK, you know, the following year, we won't be a part of this pilot. Are there, do I still have to take MCAS?
So, let's talk, so let's talk about that ninth grader, see if this answers your question. So, the ninth grader in a PARK environment where, and still in the years where there's the MCAS for competency determination, right? So, that student would take PARK in ninth grade, although yet to be determined, probably an end-of-the, kind of an end-of-the-course exam mainly. They'd take the competency determination measure in 10th grade, because they have to pass that. But also, don't forget that in ninth grade, as you heard last time we were together, they've taken a Science MCAS, because they need that as part of the competency determination.
Right.
Because remember, the competency determination is made up of Science, English Language Arts, and Math, right? It's just that the Science portion is done in ninth grade. So, in ninth grade, PARK and that MCAS Science exam. In 10th grade, the English Language Arts and Math, assuming they clear those hurdles and they've met the competency determination. Then there's the possibility yet, although I don't think we've completely determined this, state law, federal law doesn't require assessment in 11th grade. So, there's some question as to whether people will do that assessment, right? The possibility of PARK in 11th grade.
Okay.
Did I answer any part of your question?
No, I think you answered, you answered the entire question.
Excellent.
I was just debating whether to have a follow-up. One quick question, what's, is there a financial impact on either?
No, to us, no. I mean, again, the problem at the state level right now is the budget that they have for assessment for next year, and one of the reasons that they've established these two gates is to guarantee districts that have their decision in by June 30th that they can go with PARK, because they wouldn't have enough to fund both assessments, we're being told, if 75% of the districts chose PARK, right? That would lead to a budget problem in terms of what they have to spend on these assessments. So, they've established these two different gates, a guarantee to people by June 30th, a maybe you'll get in by October 1st. Now, oh, one other answer, I want to give to that, though, is there is a development of more formative assessments, which would be a district-by-district choice as to whether we chose to use their formative assessments, within individual courses, within individual grade levels, entirely a district choice. If we chose to use those, those are still in development. If we chose to use those, we'd pay for those. But that's entirely our choice.
Ms. Gata?
I basically just have a comment. As somebody who taught for many years with MCAS being used, as a sixth-grade teacher, my kids had a reading MCAS and a math MCAS, two days, plus the day you did a little prep. We're now saying that these kids are going to spend nine sessions? That...
So, first of all, they have more than that in sixth grade now under MCAS, right? So, that, you're right, you're right, in terms of, in terms of what we were looking at at one time, in terms of numbers of testing sessions, but that's no longer the number of testing sessions. And the other piece I have to add, that principals really spoke eloquently to the other day, and this really goes to the timed nature of the tests. And again, I'm not there yet to channel them for a moment, but you know where I stand on this issue. That is that because those tests are untimed, they often were day-long events, or major part-of-a-day events. These are not. These are not. Now, I, you know, that's not, that's not going to satisfy, right? Doesn't satisfy me, but when I'm trying to balance the total amount of time, right, it's closer than saying this assessment does this many sessions, and this assessment does this many sessions.
Well, the difference is, they may be day-long events for a few children, but they're not necessarily day-long events for everyone. And the truth of the matter is, when you're taking a test on any given day, you don't get a really lot of quality teaching time, even when the test is over, because the kids are, they're done. I, you know, I think, and I don't mean us, and I just think that in general, this, I simply have to say that this is such, I don't know, it's very intrusive into the learning process, because it cuts down the time that you are actually teaching. And in my mind, I think that's more, I do believe in data, but I think there has to be a balance. And I feel as if what we're getting in, in this country, I don't mean necessarily us or Massachusetts, is really an emphasis on testing that makes it, in some people's minds, seem more important than the teaching itself.
I entirely agree, I agree with everything you've said. I think, I think, I think these, whether it's MCAS, other next-generation assessments, this assessment, that's a lot of testing sessions. And, you know, you've heard me say over and over again before, you couple that with the fact that our day is too short, and we don't have enough days in the year to begin with, and it's, and it becomes more difficult even for us than others, and nine sessions, or the number of sessions we're doing in MCAS, is a lot of assessment.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Michelle.
A very quick...
A very quick one. So, I was reading the, the 11th grade test. Why would we want to do that?
I think we'd want to do it, at least in part, so that our high school has an experience with these next generation assessments.
But they would have the ninth grade experience, correct?
But, yeah.
And can we pick just to do ninth and not?
That's, that's really what I meant, is, and I'm talking, I'm talking about both students and teachers. Again, our teacher, our, our teachers haven't had an experience at all with these assessments, and we've had some really interesting conversations as a result of that. These are different, right? And, and, and it's as much for us about, about that experience. And, and, you know, we have students, I mean, we've seen some of the data, and it's not the numbers that some other districts have, but we have students who end up in, in, in going to a college experience and having to take a remedial experience. And certain scores on certain assessments in that 11th grade year allows those students to go right into a regular college track and not have those remedial experiences. And that is worth something. This is, this is something that all of Massachusetts...
Colleges do their own entrance exams, too.
They've agreed to sign off on this as a...
State colleges.
Yes, as an entrance, and, and, and we have a lot of students who go to state colleges.
Is it state colleges throughout the United States?
Throughout Massachusetts right now. Or is it all Park State?
Massachusetts is stating it, so I don't know if it's...
Right. Yeah, I don't know that. It's at least Massachusetts, and I believe it was meant to be a consortium-wide. But we have a number of students who go to those schools, and we do have students who, who need to participate in those remedial courses in their initial experiences. And this gives them an opportunity to go straight into those. So, again, it's as much about the experience of the assessment in a year when we're held harmless, right? If we have choices to be made down the road as to whether we administer an 11th grade assessment, I might have a very different recommendation for you. This is about 2015, this recommendation.
Ms. Stone?
I will try to be brief. I really just wanna associate myself with what Barbara said. I find this frankly, maybe it's the lateness of the hour, I find this absolutely horrifying, and I couldn't be happier that my children are no longer in this part of their educational system. I just can't believe that this is what's best for teaching and learning. This level of testing, I am particularly worried about, I'm particularly worried about the high school for, for the next stage, because we're essentially saying to all of the kids who took MCAS this year in 10th grade and thought they were done, that they're not gonna be done. They're gonna take Park next year. And in a junior year that is already fraught with pressure and tension and stress, that is not good for the kids, in my view, having experienced it now with two. And I just, I'm finding this really, really, really hard to swallow.
So, that's a good point, and we can, we can make a different decision on 11th grade, right? I was asked why we'd look at the high school. I gave you our reasoning as to why we would look at the high school. That's a very good point about students who've gone through the competency determination. I'm with you on the assessments, on the number of testing sessions. Let me just say again that this recommendation is based on what we believe is coming, and where we need, where we believe we need to position our students and our teachers in terms of preparing them for that next generation type of assessment, which again, many people think is, is bound and determined to be Park coming into 2016.
Right. And my comments are not about your recommendation. I think your reasoning is sound. My comments are more about the general direction of this and what it's doing to what we can do with education. And I, I'm really troubled by it.
Dr. Jackson?
One last question, just about the, when you pointed it out, you get the choice to do either paper or online.
Yes.
Over time, I imagine they may move the whole thing online, but we don't know that.
So, we have, so, good, good question, thank you. We have three years, three years that were guaranteed that a paper pencil version will be available. Three years, starting next year. That if, if the Commonwealth went to Park, that there would be a paper pencil. Again, it's gonna be longer than that. There's gonna be a paper pencil version long, available longer than that. Although, as I mentioned the la, last time we were here, there was a hearing last week on the Senate bill and the $38 million. We do expect that to get reported out, and that to be available next year for infrastructure, although that's a drop in the bucket compared to what's necessary to make Massachusetts Park-ready.
And have they at all addressed the, you mentioned the time test nature of it, the limitation of being a test of typing and not cognition?
Yeah, so, so one of the things that the state board has asked for, and that our association has pushed pretty hard for, is, is an analysis, a study of, of the issues around the online versus the paper pencil test, and the issues of what you're really testing. And, and also, we've added into that and asked the state board to take a close look at that differentiated, particularly for students of low income, who may not have access at all. So, those kinds of issues, and we've received a commitment that those will all be part of that study.
Right.
Testing and testing, typing and everything.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yes.
So, number one, it is late. Number two, this is a very important discussion to have. The only thing I will say is that the Common Core and Park in particular have created a tremendous amount of interest, energy, controversy around the country, and to some extent in Massachusetts, to some extent in Brookline. And I would just hope that what this committee does is ensure that our comments do not add to the hyperbole and unhelpful rhetoric around the debate, but that we can think about it in a, as dispassionate a way as possible, and try to think about what is best for our students at the end of the day, which is more important than anything else, both in terms of the skills that it encourages, the tests themselves, the, the process of taking the tests and everything. And I hope that we can have a well-informed and well-reasoned discussion. And I understand we'll have a public hearing next week, and there'll be plenty of opportunity for, sorry, two weeks. There'll be plenty of opportunity to hear from the public at that point, and then we can, we can have a vote two weeks later. So, this will be a month-long process. All right. Thank you. Nope, thank you. We are now, we have need of an executive session. Oh, I also wanted to thank Ms. Marr for her help on all of this. We appreciate it, as ever. It's now time to move into executive session. We need a motion to move to enter executive session to consider the lease of real property because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the school litigation, on the school committee's negotiating position, and to discuss strategy with respect to litigation because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the school committee's litigating position. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Coin, will you please poll the committee?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thank you, and it's unanimous, the school committee will reconvene in open session at the end of the executive session for the purposes of adjourning. Thank you very much.